Great, thank you. Okay, we're back in open session on the Executive Committee agenda. We've received our, received several reports and closed, and we're now coming out to conduct business under 3.2, which is our selection of a vendor for general counsel and chief trial counsel performance evaluation. And this item is being presented by our Human Resource Director, Justice Israel. So if we could promote justice, which I think we do every day here, promote justice. Sorry, that was my one dad joke of the day. Don't hold me to that. Okay, all right. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, so it's, at this time, I think, did you want, I'm sorry, did you want a recommendation at this point or to go over the staff report? I missed the first part of that.
Yes, sorry, Justice, if you could highlight the staff report, that would be great.
Got it, okay. Let's see if I can share that. Sharon, do you happen to have that staff report handy by chance that you could share?
Yes, I can, or?
Justice, if you want to briefly discuss it, I don't know that we need to share it in the interest of the.
The bottom line is, we basically reached out to 10 potential vendors for, you know, to conduct services for the 360-degree surveys for our chief trial counsel and our general counsel executive positions. We received three bids from that outreach, and of those three, we believe that there's, I think, probably one who is really the most viable candidate based on the pricing and the total number of respondents that they were able to service here, because the other two seem to have a pretty limited number of respondents that they could provide service for. And with the chief trial counsel having roughly 300 respondents in OCTC alone, it seems like that's potentially the best option. So, other than that, I think their pricing was also fairly competitive as well, and so I'll leave it maybe to the board as far as their decision goes on this.
All right. So just by way of background, we've used the same vendor for at least three years to conduct our 360 performance evaluations. The evaluation of our executive-level staff is one of the, you know, the things that the Board of Trustees should take the most seriously, and we thought, in consultation with other trustee members, including trustee Tony, that we get fresh perspective in that, in that space and go out and look for other vendors. I think one of the things that, you know, is of utmost importance to me, especially in a year where we're going to be putting forward a chief trial counsel for, for appointment, and who's going to be going through the confirmation process, is that it's going to be important for us to hear from our staff, to understand how everything is going in these various offices, and for us to be responsive as a board in getting, you know, getting our message out to various stakeholders. So I know that we have a, an aggressive timeline to get this done. Justice, I want to thank you for getting these bids done, going out, getting, getting some fresh blood in this space. And so I think, do we have a resolution that we can put up now with, with the vendor that, I'm blanking on the name, 3D?
That's correct.
3D Group? And so what was significant about 3D Group, just as Justice said, was the ability to handle large numbers of responses, and certainly we want to continue to engage our workforce and to see if there's anything that we can be doing better in any way that we, as a Board of Trustees, can be responsive to their concerns. So unless there's any questions or comments for Justice, see the resolution, may I have a first and a second?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Chair Song says, also just make note of the fact that I was impressed with the, with the, sort of the national recognition that this group has received for conducting these types of 360 reports.
Yes, absolutely. And many thanks to Praxis Consulting. You've been a very valuable partner to us in the past, and we appreciate all of your, all of your service. So with that said, we have a first by trustee Good, second by trustee So Well. May I have a roll call vote?
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
So Well?
Aye.
Trejo not present, Stallings?
Aye.
With four ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the Executive Committee meeting, and we will adjourn this and go into finance, which I believe starts in a couple of minutes at 10 o'clock.
Good morning, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 18 Finance Committee of the State Bar. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, and if I could request the committee coordinator, Sam Tesoro, if you would please call the roll.
Barahona?
Present.
Gore?
Here.
Grande?
Here.
So Well?
Present.
Trejo?
Not present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before, again, I would like to, before we begin, I'd like to just remind everyone of sort of the ground rules for speaking, as the public comment period is our next item. I'd like to remind everyone that under the Bagley-Keen Open Meetings Act, public comments must pertain to items that are on the board agenda or be related to matters that are within the jurisdiction of this agency. Specifically, the Finance Committee leads the oversight and review of the State Bar's budget preparation. The Finance Committee does not have authority over attorney discipline, and there are no attorney discipline matters on the agenda for today's meeting. For those who are participating in, in the room, if you would just, just make yourself known, and we will endeavor to, to get you in the queue for public comment. For those who are participating via Zoom, there should be a virtual raise your hand function, and if you use that function, you will be, be recognized. And those of you who are participating via phone, if you would press the star nine key, that is the key that will get you in the queue for, for public comment. Due to the time restrictions, I think we will not allow more than three minutes for, for public comment during the, during this, today's Finance Committee meeting. And, and with that, I'd like to ask Sam and, and others if we have folks in the queue for public comment.
We currently don't have any public commenters at this time.
And I don't see anybody in the, in the room for public comment either. So I think we can move forward with the next item on the, on the agenda, I think, which is the, the oral report of the, of the Finance Committee Chair. I actually don't have an oral report today, but I do want to make one note in terms of how I'd like the, the Finance Committee meeting to flow in terms of the chronology of the meeting today. I'd like to move that we take, I don't necessarily know if I need to move it, but I just, just want to make sure folks know what the flow is going to be. I'd like to take up item 3.1 first. 3.3 would be the, the item that we would take second, and then I'd like to group items 3.2 and 3.4 together. That would be the quarterly investment report, and then also the quarter two financial statements. So 3-1, 3-3, 3-2, 3-4. Okay? And without seeing any sort of concerns with that, I think we can move to the next item on the agenda, which will approval of the prior Finance Committee meeting minutes of May 22, 2025. Hope committee members have had a chance to review the minutes, and if there are not any changes, I'd be looking for a motion to move the minutes.
I move, and I'll second.
So moved by trustee Grande and seconded by trustee Barahona. Sam, would you please call the roll?
You're on mute.
We can't hear you, Sam.
Sorry. Barahona?
Aye.
Gore?
Upstate.
Grande?
Aye.
Trejo not present, So Well?
Aye.
That's three ayes, zero nays, minutes are adopted.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is approval of licensee requests for adjustments of fees, penalties, and charges, and it's my understanding that State Bar staff member Steve Moehd will, will present this item. And if he could be promoted, that would be great.
Yes, good morning, trustees. Can you hear me?
We, we can't hear you. Steve, can you hold, hold just one second? Is there any way that we could get the, yeah, the closed caption? Very good.
Okay. Are you ready for me to proceed?
Please, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to discuss the approval of licensee requests for adjustment of fees. There are 19 total requests. These were all screened by the Board of Trustees Working Group assigned to this task. There are 18 related to wildfire relief, and the requests were submitted after the May 25 board meeting, where the board approved previous wildfire relief waivers. Those 18 waivers account for almost $8,000 in waivers. The Working Group recommends approving these wildfire-related fee waivers. There is one additional request for a waiver of $2,744 in outstanding license fees and penalties, and the Working Group recommends denying that request for a waiver.
Question from committee members regarding the, the presentation? Is there a resolution for this particular item? Committee members haven't had a chance to review the resolution. Looking for a motion and a second, please.
Moved?
I'll second.
So moved by trustee Gore and seconded by trustee Barahona. Sam, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Barahona?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Trejo not present, So Well?
Aye.
It's four ayes, zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Moehd.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we're going out of, going out of order, would be item 3.3, the Fresh Start Settlement Program and Collection Update. And our Chief Financial Officer, Araceli Montoya Chico, I think you'll be handling the remainder of the items, is that correct, Araceli?
Yes.
Okay. Take it away.
This item, it's informational item only, there's no action, but I did wanted to provide an update on the Fresh Start Settlement Program that started this year. There you go. Yeah, so just as a quick overview of what the program is, the Fresh Start Settlement Program is a one-time debt collection, debt settlement program that was approved by the board last September of 2024, and it was also authorized by State Bar Rule 3.1000. This program was officially launched in February 2025, and as I mentioned, it's going to go only through this year, through the end of December. It basically allows current and former attorneys to settle their debt, certain outstanding debt, for really a fraction of the cost. Some of the eligible debt that, that's included in here would be primarily CSF reimbursements, that's where really most of our debt sits, as well as some disciplinary costs and sanctions. We were able to use a third-party platform called Econcilia Door. That's where all of the attorneys log in, and they're allowed to make offers and counteroffers to provide proof of financial hardship, which is one of the requirements we do when we're settling for an amount lower than what the State Bar essentially is offering, and that's also where agreements are signed, and payments are also made through this platform. The board did approve to spend on this particular program to put it into, in place, $750,000. We came under budget, we've only spent, we are only, we only spent about $350,000, all of the costs have been incurred since the program has been running, so we, we were well below budget. And those costs were primarily, it's really primarily the platform itself, but we did also have some behavioral consultants, and we do have a contract for the call center to help us with the, any, any calls that were received as a result of the participants' calling. Sorry, I went. So I wanted to kind of provide a quick engagement, the program engagement. We did send out an invitation to this program to about 2,600 attorneys, or attorneys who, that were either primarily disbarred or resigned. As you can see here, that's most of the population. There's also a smaller percentage of suspended and active or involuntary active attorneys. Because most of them are disbarred or resigned attorneys, as you can see here in this pie chart, we've had no engagement at all of about 78% of the total participants that were invited, which is not surprising, really. 7% have logged in but have really taken no further action, and only a total of 15% have either reached a settlement with us or are in the process of reaching a settlement or we haven't been able yet to reach a settlement. Part of the problem with the disbarred and resigned attorneys is that they've been out of the profession for so long that we just don't have their updated information. So, you know, we've made several attempts to try to reach out to as many resigned and disbarred attorneys as possible, but a majority of the individuals invited have, have not yet logged into the system. In August of this year, we did, again, you know, continue our outreach efforts, we did a news release, and we also reposted on our social media pages in hopes that we will get an uptick in participation, but it is challenging to find contact information for a lot of these individuals. And in terms of, these are the figures, the dollar figures, so out of everybody that has logged in and settled, we have 313 settlements worth $2.4 million. The settlements could be paid either in installments or in a lump sum payment. So out of the 313 million, as I mentioned, 2.4 have settled, and of that, we've collected 1.4 million to date. So we do have the remaining that has to be paid by the end of this year. Anything that hasn't been paid by, really by January 1st will be considered void. So at that point in time, we will reinstate the debt, start sending it again to the Franchise Tax Board, which is what we use for collections, and we will reinstate, as I mentioned, their debt less any payments that they may have made up, up until that point. So this is just a summary of all of the participants by type and the composition of the settlements themselves. And I also wanted to provide a quick, what I'm calling other collection activities. So outside of the Fresh Start Settlement Program, which is the main focus this year for collection, we do normally collect via the Franchise Tax Board, and there's two programs that we use with them. One is called the Franchise Tax Board Court Order Debt, and the second one is the Tax Intercept, excuse me. The tax, the Court Order Debt, what it does is it garnishes wages or levies bank accounts, and that's how we get some of the collections from disbarred and resigned attorneys. The Tax Intercept would intercept tax refunds or lottery winnings if there's any or unclaimed property when sold. So we've gotten a very limited amount, but we have before through those means. And then the final one is through direct reimbursements. So sometimes attorneys will pay the State Bar directly, or if they're active, it oftentimes is part of their annual licensee statement, and they pay us directly through those means. But this is just to show that most of our collections this year, and this is only through July, data through July, has come from the Fresh Start Settlement Program, but we do have our normal means that we are still collecting some money from. And then this table here just shows you the collections for the past four years, and it's split between the grays, the Client Security Fund, and the blues, the General Fund. Those are the only two funds where collections that come in go to. Obviously, the Fresh Start Settlement Program has had success because we have a 75% increase in collections compared to last year. Most of that, as you can see, is in the General Fund, which is primarily where the Fresh Start settlements are being recorded to. We did, it, it will fall below budget. We budgeted to be, we were hoping to collect around $8 million as part of the Fresh Start Settlement Program for the entire year, but as I mentioned, as of July, we've only collected 2.4 in the General Fund. So we will, the reality is that we will fall short of both the General Fund and the Client Security Fund expectations we had set, but at least overall, we have, we have had an increase in collections. And that's, that's all I have for the Fresh Start Settlement update and collections, if anyone has questions.
Questions from committee members?
I have one question. Thanks so much, Araceli. Do you, is the, do you know what the allocation split is to the General Fund and to the Client Security Fund? Is it like a 50/50 once those dollars come in, once we recoup those?
Normally, or as part of the Fresh Start Settlement Program?
As part of the Fresh Start.
As part of the Fresh Start Settlement Program, if it's discipline costs, we are doing most of it or all of it to the General Fund. If it's CSF-related, we're doing 50/50, and that's something that the legislature allowed us to do.
Got it, okay, great.
Other questions, please?
Thanks, Araceli. I appreciate the work to summarize this for us. So the significant jump from 20, you know, from the previous three years to 2025, is that a function of the new program, or is it more collectibles that are eligible? Like, why is there such a significant jump?
It really is just the Fresh Start Settlement Program. We haven't collect, if you look at the '22 through '24, it's been about 1.6 hitting 1.7, but the Fresh Start Settlement really has helped open some of those collections. Yeah.
Other questions?
I, I know you said we'd fall short, but is there an impact on that?
No, it's really just money. I mean, we, it's about 200, around 200 million of, of debt that we have outstanding, and I mean, we've only collected 1 point, on average, 1.6, 1.7, it's, it's what, 1%, 2%, I think is what we calculated. So no, it's just money that we're recouping essentially of, and it's, some of the debt is, is really old, so it would just be beneficial to us to be able to collect it.
Thank you.
Araceli, just sort of building on, on what you just said, after the first of the year, that debt goes back, there's no, there's no settlement opportunities for, for the individuals that, that we're seeking repayment from. And does that mean that that then clicks into the, the franchise tax boards' process in order to recoup that debt for us?
Yes, and we, we actively do that. So we, we've stopped, any, anybody that's part of this program, we've stopped sending the debt to the FDB. But once we resume January of next year, we actively send all of the collection data to the FDB, and they help, you know, garnish wages, et cetera, through these two programs.
I guess what I'm wondering is, if, if some of these folks have been difficult to contact, all right, could the FDB help us during this, I mean, just the, the last couple of months of this program? Because, you know, come January, the FDB, I mean, folks have to pay taxes, they have to do, they're going to get contacted by, by the FDB, and I'm just wondering, if we haven't been able to contact them at this particular point in time, and, and we've basically stopped the FDB from kind of interacting with them, I'm wondering if just on an, just for the next couple of months, if we could ask the FDB, could they contact these folks and, and make them aware of the, of the Fresh Start Settlement Program? Does, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes. I know we've used various forms to try to, and I guess we haven't pulled anyone back, as would have been told by, by my team. We, whenever we send debt, we often get a return back to us from the FDB, and it is because they're unable to find assets. So if somebody, especially if they're disbarred for a long time, if they don't have assets to collect, they just get it returned to us, and I, I don't know how often it gets, I know we send it periodically, but after a certain amount of time that the FDB is unable to find any assets to collect on, the debt gets sent back to us. So we have to wait, I forget what, if it's a year or 18 months, a certain amount of time before we can send it back in hopes that they can also do collection efforts again. So it's, it's, I think they're also, if we're unable to contact them, oftentimes, FDB's also unable to contact them. But, but I can check with, with our team, see if, what means the FDB's using.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in that. I know this is only an informational item. I think the other thing I'd be interested in is if, if you could somehow categorize the, the age of the debt so that we would know, okay, some of this is from 10 years ago, five years ago, somehow get some, some perspective on, on what might be, I guess, more apt for us to be able to go after.
Mm-hmm. And I, and one thing I forgot to mention is, once this program ends, I do plan on doing a presentation, again, at the next board meeting, or the first board meeting of the year, to kind of give an, an overall result on what the program collected, and I, we can address how the debt that was outstanding is. Because we do have that data, I just don't have it handy with me.
Yeah, if I could follow up on that as well. So when we are carrying this on the balance sheet, is this showing out, up as receivables? And then have we ever written those off as bad debt so that we can kind of, and of course, then you have to say, when the bad debt, and then we can write it down, but if it continues, a large amount continues to be carried, it's sort of this artificial inflation of the balance sheet? Yeah.
Yes, so you are correct. We do, we do have this entire debt on the balance sheet. It is a receivable. We haven't written it off. We have reserved for it, 99% reserve, meaning we have an allowance against it. So the net impact is 1%, essentially almost 1%, and it's just that 1.6, 1.7 million that we do collect. But, but yeah, it's, it's been reserved for, so the net impact is really minimal.
Just one quick question. Do we, given the, the success of the, of the program, do we anticipate, on average, we've been doing 1.6, 1.7, do we anticipate next year it's, we're expecting less, and if we are, by how much?
I would say yes. Once we get out of the settlement program, I expect the debt to be probably around the same, the same number as the prior years.
Okay.
And we will budget that accordingly. We really haven't seen any, and the, we have, we haven't received any new information, and historically, it's been around 1.6, 1.7.
So I think what I'm, I'm anticipating, the item that you might bring, bring back to us, Araceli, and I guess that item would basically not make, given the limited success of this program, not recommend that we, we do this again.
We, we could recommend it. I think we would probably need the legislature to approve us to do it for another year, because they did approve for us to do it this year, and to be able to split the, the collections 50/50 to the General Fund, that, that normally does not happen. I think the challenge is really most, I think around 86% is disbarred and resigned attorneys, is just being able to get their contact information. It is an incentive for attorneys to settle. I mean, some attorneys have hundreds of thousands of debts, and they can settle for a lower amount.
Yeah.
So it's an incentive for, for them to get it off, off, you know, for their record, essentially, but it's, it's an outreach, and them willing to settle as well for some, some amount.
Any other questions on this item? I know this is, there's, this was just an informational item, so thank you for the presentation, Araceli, and we'll, we'll move to the next item, which should be item 3.2, the approval of the 2025 Quarter Two Investment Report.
Yes. I don't have a presentation for this one. It, it's relatively short, it's one of our recurring items that I present. We do follow the California Investment Policy, which is pretty conservative. All of our investments right now are sitting with Wells Fargo, and a smaller portion, around 31 million, is sitting in Leif, the local agency investment fund. And, and most of our Wells Fargo investments are, are government securities or commercial paper, and it's, the interest rates have actually at least exceeded my expectations this year. We haven't had any rate cuts up until, was it yesterday that the Fed announced they're going to do their first 1/4% rate cut in, coming up soon? So the rates are going to come down, but so far, if you look at Attachment 8-2, that's where we have the detail of all of the investments we have, and the rates, the yields have actually maintained pretty well in the mid, in the mid 4%, they will drop a little bit. I don't know if they'll drop below 4%, but surely in the next quarter, you will, you will see the rates come down a little. But other than that, there's nothing out of the ordinary to mention for the investment report, if anyone has any questions. But other than that, there's nothing out of the ordinary to mention for the investment report, if anyone has any questions.
Questions from committee members about the investment report? Fairly standard, and, and I think the, the good news is we continue to, to earn interest at a, at a pretty good clip, which is, I think you'll see in the next item, which is really sort of helping us quite a bit as we try to, to stay on budget.
Yes.
Okay, having no, seeing no questions, can we get the resolution to approve this investment report on the, on the screen, please? Committee members who've had a chance to review the, the resolution, can I get a first and a second, please?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
So moved by Trustee Barahona, and then seconded by Trustee Gore. Sam, would you call the roll, please?
Barahona?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Runde?
Aye.
Trejo not present, so all.
Aye.
Four ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. And Adiselli, I think we'll big, we'll move to the big item, which is item 3.4.
Yes, this item is, has multiple components to it. I'll start by providing the results of our Quarter Two financial statements. And included in here, I will talk about the mid-year, proposed mid-year budget amendments, as well as the projections based on our updated data through the end of 2025, and as well as provide a variance analysis report that's, that's required during the mid-year. So I'm going to start off first with our financial statement results, the revenue. Bar-wide, we've exceeded revenue by almost 28 million, just under 28 million. And this is the composition of all of, of the reason why we're over in revenue. Starting first with the general fund, the general fund's doing very well. It's above budget by 6.4 million, and that's really mainly due to two reasons. One is mandatory fees are exceeding our budget, and then as well as the late fees, late and non-compliance fees and penalties have also exceeded our budget. The mandatory fees is a trend that we have not seen in the past. Last year, for those committee members that were part of it, we actually fell short of our mandatory fees, but the late fees and the investment income helped us meet our revenue targets. This year, as of Q2, we have already exceeded our annual budget for mandatory fees. If the trend continues, and, and most of the fees do come in the first, first quarter of the year, so we will have a little bit of trickle in additional fees. But if the trend continues for the remaining of the year, we, we anticipate to be over budget by 1.4 million in mandatory fees. So again, a trend that we just hadn't seen before, but certainly it's helping that huge increase in revenue from, from budget. Moving on to the Equal Access Fund, this one is below budget by just under half a million dollars. The Equal Access Fund is one of our grant funds, which is all pass-through, so you will see revenue coming in and rev, and expenses going out. And you, you should see the same effect on the expense side, but this is really just due to some grants that were declined or delayed as of Q2, but we do anticipate them catching up in the second quarter, sorry, the second half of the year. Moving on to the Legal Services Trust Fund, this is another trend that I, that has been going on quarter over quarter. The revenues always exceed our budget. This is where the IOTA, the Interest on Lawyers Trust account sits, and the revenues, interest on that has just been outpacing our expectations or budget by far. And the budget for the Legal Services Trust Fund comes from the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, so they always adopt their average account balances and interest rates they expect, and the actuals have always exceeded, which really is what drives a huge revenue increase compared to budget. And it's, in my future slides, is one of the budget amendments that we're going to propose just to try to catch up the budget to actuals. The admissions fund, as you see here, is below budget by almost four and a half million dollars. And this is really just a result of all of the fee waivers that we gave for the February bar exam, and really extending the withdrawal periods for February and July up until, I think, almost the day before, or, or really close to, to the debt, to the actual exam date. So that, that really resulted in us losing four and a half million dollars worth of revenue. So this will be another budget amendment that I'll speak about as a result of the February issues we had in the bar exam. The Client Security Fund is more or less on budget. It's, it's a little bit over revenue by $300,000. And it's really just similar, it also gets funded by mandatory fees, so it's, it's a similar explanation as the general fund. We've had more mandatory, mandatory fees paid, so the Client Security Fund revenue has exceeded budget. And then finally, the other funds' revenue, it's above budget by almost 4 million, and that's really, within this other funds, there's the Gregory Noel Justice Gap Fund, and that particular fund has received donations, class action suit settlement donations. And that's what really makes up most of that overage in revenue. Now I'm going to move to the expense. Yes, so bar-wide, our expenses are below budget by $1.8 million, and that's really mostly, as you can see, from the general fund. So the general fund is below budget by $1.3 million. For $1.3 million, and this is, due to a few reasons, it's less spending on our building operations, less travel and training than expected in the first quarter, and savings in professional services and equipment from delayed projects. On the building operations, we had less spending in general services than anticipated. Excuse me, for the professional services and equipment, it's just really project delays. Some are going to be carried out to the second half of the year, some are going to get pushed out to 2026. But that's really, it's just project delays that have resulted in savings for us, and primarily professional services and equipments in the general fund. There is a little bit of overage that was offset in professional, not professional, sorry, personnel costs. We've had certain, we allow employees to cash out their, their vacation, so personnel costs right now are over, but, you know, they help offset, or the savings help offset some of the personnel costs overages that we've seen in the general fund. But overall expenses are below budget. The, I won't talk about, the Equal Access Fund is pretty much on target, on budget. The Grants Fund is also below, as I mentioned in the revenue side, it's also below the expense budget on the grant side. And that's just because the Care Court, excuse me, Care Court Grant, which sits in the Grants Fund, they had a delay in signing a certain contract with several counties. So it's just a delay of, of disbursement, so they'll, they'll catch up in Q2, in the second half of the year, sorry. The Legal Services Trust Fund, it's, it's actually above, above budget by just under half a million dollars, and that's just because we disbursed Q3, some Q3 and some Q4 dispersments to grantees early. The Admissions Fund, as you can see here, it, it looks relatively okay. It is below budget by 600,000, but that's all of the expenses for the July bar exam having come in as of Q2. So you will see in my subsequent slides, we do have a budget amendment to increase by a couple million dollars, the admissions fund expenses. So right now, it looks okay, but, but the reality is that we've, we've incurred a lot more expenses than, than we had budgeted. And then finally, the Client Security Fund, it's slightly above their expense budget by almost 200,000, and that's just receiving less collections, as I mentioned, than we had anticipated from the Fresh Start settlement program. Now I'm going to move on to the projections, mid-year projections. So what we do at mid-year is, we take all of the data we've seen for the first half of the year, and then redo our projections to see where all of the funds are going to end for, for the year, for 2025. So this is all of the funds' projections and reserve balances. And just as a reminder, the board does have a reserve, reserve requirement of 17% to 30% for any fund. I shouldn't say any fund. The ones that are listed here as NA are all either grant-related funds or the Client Security Fund, and these are exempt from the reserve targets of 17% to 30%. And I will go into more details in the subsequent slides. But as you see here, the general fund, I do want to highlight, is, is projecting to have higher reserves than we had budgeted. We're projecting the reserves to end at almost 25 million, just under 20, 25 million, and the reserve will be about 20%, which is something we hadn't seen, I want to say, in the last two, two to three years. So this will be the first time that, if everything goes according to plan, the general fund will finally hit, be above that minimum target. So that's a good sign. Admissions, on the other hand, is, is flipped. Their reserves are below the target, and I'll get more into those details in subsequent slides. But other than that, it's really admissions in the lawyers' assistance program that are falling below, below the target. So I want to talk about, really quickly about those two, since they're the only two funds that are below the 17% floor. The lawyers' assistance program, it did, we had budgeted, budgeted a deficit of just 300,000, and it improved. It's still at a deficit, but it improved to be only, they're almost at break even, about 100,000. There was a lease that was, that was terminated, that was completed for the lawyers' assistance program, so that, that helped cut costs there and generate savings. And there will be some personal changes that we will have to do so that this fund can be sustained in the long term. The admissions fund, as I mentioned, based on their projections, is going to end the year, hopefully at around 3.4 million, which is around 10, almost 11% of the reserve, which I mentioned is below, below the target that we ideally want. We had initially adopted a budget surplus in the admissions fund of 3.1 million, and with all of the revenue that we lost and expenses that we had to incur, we're now projecting a deficit of 3 million in the admissions fund, so it completely flipped, almost 6.1 million in the negative. And I'll get more into it, but, you know, it's a component of revenue decreasing significantly and expenses as well, mostly from the MBE and all of the return to in-person costs, return to in-person July exam, and all of the costs we had to incur there. And just to provide some highlights in the other funds, and I won't go through all of them, but the general fund, as I mentioned, we had initially budgeted, adopted a budget of a $4.9 million deficit. And based on all of the revenue that we've collected as of Q2, we're projecting now a surplus of $2.1 million. So that's, that's a change in the positive direction. Most of that is, as I mentioned, the increases in, in mandatory fees or in, or exceeding our C-TAP and late non-compliance fees and investment incomes. Those three components have really helped the general fund revenue exceed our targets and really push us into a surplus position for 2025. The Client Security Fund also has had a surplus, not, not too much change, 1.5 now, we're projecting 1.4. The reserves are still healthy, though. They're still at around, just under 13 million reserves. So the Client Security Fund is funded also by mandatory fees, so they benefited from, from mandatory fees and investment. All of the funds are benefiting from the additional investment income we're getting. The Legal Services Trust Fund, I do want to highlight, it looks odd because we're projecting a deficit spending in the Legal Services Trust Fund. I think of almost 70, 76 million dollars. Their reserves, though, are extremely healthy. If you look, their reserves are about 242 million. So the deficit spending is really just due to the fact that in the prior years, there's been a lot of interest earned, and the, the reserves have been growing, but they hadn't dispersed as much as the revenue that was being received. So the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission is, made it a point that this year and next year, and a portion of 2027, they are actively going to disbar, disperse a lot of those accumulated funds. So they're not tapping into any of our operations or anything. It's just they're dispersing more funds this year based on, you know, the huge reserves that they have. That's what the deficit really is. Now I want to move into, so included in here, I, I won't go into the details, but I'm happy to answer questions. As part of Attachment D, this is the budget to actual variance analysis. We provide explanations for anything that's plus or minus 200,000 on both the revenue side and expense side. There's, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions on this variance analysis, but I, I won't go into every single detail in here. What I do want to move on to, though, is the proposed budget amendments, and this is going to be in Attachment D. So the proposed budget amendments are based on actual financial data that we have through June, and the purpose is to correct some inaccuracies that we may have identified as the year has gone by. We want to correct some budget inaccuracies, but most of them are just anticipated changes in the adopted budget that we now need to correct for the second half of the year. In terms of budget transfers, those are really all between the general fund. When we have savings in one cost center, we try to transfer them to another cost center to, that may be over, to try to balance the overage in one with savings from another. But again, it's all in the general fund. There's no impact. There's no interfund, there's no interfund transfer this year. The proposed budget amendments, those are in between increases or reductions of revenue, and the same on the expense side. Most of these are the admissions fund, which I will get into. There's a portion that's grant-related, so that we receive some new grants that we now need to account for in the budget. Or like the Legal Services Trust Fund, we need to true-up the, the Legal Services Trust Fund for the IOTA piece. And then in the general fund, the general fund is, is the only budget amendment that we have, and that's just to increase the cost for litigation, cost that, that we have to, that we're currently in the process of doing. So I want to get into the budget, the, sorry, the admissions, the admissions amendments. And the revenue, and this is going to be, I said Attachment D, and I, I won't go into every single one, because as you can see, it's very detailed, but the general fund-related revenue is item two, it's item 2B in your attachment. Starting in item 2B, we have in total revenue amendments to the admissions fund to reduce it by three and a half million dollars. That reduction is really composed of a few, a few things I want to highlight first. In total, it's actually a $4.6 million reduction in revenue that's related to the February or July bar exams. This 4.6 million is offset by, if, if we recall, we approved the 25, the 2025 PLOL program at the CBE, Joint CBE Board Meeting. That's expected to generate about $600,000, so that helps offset a little bit of, of the, the reduction in revenue. We expect to get an additional 600,000 from the new PLOL program. There's also another increase from other admission programs that have had more, more expend, more applicants, excuse me, which has generated more revenue, and that's some of the pro habeice, out-of-state attorney arbitration applicants have exceeded our expectations, so there's an increase in revenue there. But in total, the admissions fund is going to, we're proposing a reduction of three and a half million dollars. On the expense side, we're proposing increase that'll total $2.6 million in expenses in the admissions fund. Most of that is an item, I have it in my notes. Items 2F details all of the admission, bar exam-related expenses that we're proposing to increase. And as I mentioned, in total, it's, it's 1.9, and this has to do with, you know, additional costs that we had to do for proctors, you know, chairs and table rentals, additional staff travel that we hadn't budgeted, AV rentals, computer rental, security guards, the MBE, certain validation consultants. All of these additional costs that we had to incur to put on the in-person July bar exam have resulted in the increase, necessary increase in admission expenses that we are now proposing to increase as part of this budget amendment. Outside of the bar exam, there's, there's a couple other increases that we need to do in admissions. 1.2 million, and that's increases for certain personnel severance and some recruiting expenses. And we are, admissions hasn't met the 8% vacancy rate we had budgeted, so we also are trying to true-up the budget to actuals there. There is a slight reduction on the expenses that, that helps net to the 2.6, and that's, we had less testing accommodation consultants and fewer law school inspections. So we've had a, a lower expenses there than we anticipated, and that's a, this reduction of half a million dollars. But net, the admissions fund is, is, we're going to increase, we need to increase expenses by 2.6 million. And that's, that's all. I'm happy to answer questions in any of the attachments that I provided in this agenda item.
Adiselli, thank you for a very comprehensive and thorough report. Looking to committee members to see if folks have questions.
I, I guess, is there a way to proactively anticipate unknown expenses in admissions? Could we, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we should expect beyond the expense that even you've just shared, given the different changes that we're making to really, you know, serve the larger community. And so I do feel like there has to be some sort of a, in, in my world, we call it an emergency fund or something where you, you need to draw from it, or, but I, I feel like we need to overestimate some of these expenses in it slightly, and I'm just curious what you think about that, or is that some exercise that you all have gone through?
We are, we are actually in the process of doing that exercise. What, we will have an ad hoc finance committee meeting next month after the CBE meeting to go over the admissions, proposed admissions fee increases. And one of the, one of the things we're doing is looking historically how much have expenses increased so that we can forecast how much expenses are going to increase, not just next year, but at, at least in the next couple of years. And we do work very closely with the Office of Admissions to try to figure out, for example, the MBE, we know we're going to pay for that for the next two years. We know what that cost is. We are looking at the trends, we're trying to find trends for the We are looking at the trends, we're trying to find trends for the site rentals, which are the most significant expense to put on a bar exam, to see how much expenses have increased in securing those, those rentals. So we are in the process of trying to analyze and trying to forecast for that in the future.
Yeah, I guess, you know, you're looking at data and making projections off that data, which certainly we should be doing. And there's sort of like this unknown, consistent unknown that we keep seeing that I think we may need to think about in addition to the projections that you're making, because it, it feels like a pressure cooker either way. And so you have to build in some wiggle room in, in some way, shape or form. And it feels like, you know, it's not the direction necessarily we want to go in. But I also think that in order to recoup year over year, we sort of have, have to have a different kind of a plan on expenses in addition to what we're already doing, I guess is what I'm saying.
No, and I agree, as you see, at the end of 2025, the reserves for the admissions are only 3.4. So that will probably get us through 2026, but not beyond that. So the admissions fund is not in a unique situation that I, I personally hadn't seen since I've been here. And we, and part of the reason is, yeah, we're going to have to project, that's what we're trying to do. Where else are costs going to increase to try to get ahead of that?
Other questions from committee members, please?
Okay, so this is me learning, having been, first time on the finance committee. So why wouldn't this just be a report out on a variance report? You know, what the difference, why isn't it, why isn't it an amendment? Because this just looks like, you know, hey, we missed projections, variance, here, here we are. Oh, great, we had a big variance. To make an amendment in the middle of a year, then when you look at your annual audited reports, you don't get to see these shocks kind of happen. So is there a reason that we do amendments instead of just variances?
So this is in the board book that at mid-year we do present, there's been a mid-year budget amendment if necessary and also, and also a variance report for the first six months. So it is part of the board book and it is really to try to true up, you know, some of these, the budget has completely, for the admissions fund specifically, has completely flipped from what we had initially adopted. So now we true it up at mid-year and it helps us, it helps us build the next year's budget once we have it trueed up.
And so is there a triggering amount? So if it's past a million dollars, if it's past $10, like what's the amount that sort of triggers? Let's do an amendment then.
It's, it's usually, if, if, I'm trying to remember my, my numbers. I think it's anything that's 200,000, that's an interfund transfer and 100,000 in expenditures or revenue increases. To 200, well, 100,000 if it's budget, budget increases in either revenue or expenses. Yeah.
Other questions from committee members? Adesely, I, well, let me ask Sam first, maybe you know as well, Adesely. I know we were, there was a poll that was sent out to committee members to figure out a time that we could, we could hold the finance committee meeting in October. And I don't know if, if there's been a time that's set, I just want to make sure committee members have that on their calendar at this, at this point.
Sam, was it the 20th?
Yeah, it was, majority were available on the 20th. But I believe there's potentially going to be new finance committee members after the swearing in ceremony. So we might need to change that date depending on when trustees are available.
Okay, well, just keep us posted as far as that goes. But one of the reasons I was asking that, Adesely, is can you maybe just say a little bit more about what will happen at that finance committee meeting in October?
So the finance committee, that ad hoc finance committee meeting is to review the proposal to increase the, all of the admissions programs, increase the fees of all of the admissions programs. And it's not just the bar exam. The admissions fund has, I think around 10, 10, 11 programs in itself. Moral character, first year law, bar exam, pouring legal consultants, et cetera. So all, we're revising, reviewing all of those fees to propose what they should be increased by. And we're working very closely with the office of admissions. We are meeting with the CBE on October 10th, I believe. They will give us their input, then we will bring whatever input or feedback we get. We will incorporate that feedback or input into, into what we bring forward to the finance committee to get the finance committee, committee's input on those fee increases. And afterwards, at the November board meeting is where we will bring the proposal for approval.
Okay. So the other thing is, could you speak to, we're doing way better in the general fund than we thought. But I do know that our projections out past 26, is it, that we're, is it 26 or 27? 27, could you just speak to that a little bit more as well?
So it, it, yes, the general fund is doing much better than we had budgeted. But I, I do want to be very cautious because in 2028, we lose the $52 fee increase that we received to primarily fund staff costs. And that's, the $52 is a huge, a huge cost. And at that point, the general fund goes into a fiscal cliff. And we going to operate, the next 26 and 27, we were projecting to be around breakeven or even slight surplus. 28 is where we go back into deficit after losing the $52.
Okay.
Something to keep in mind, yeah.
All right. I think we don't see any additional questions, but maybe I'll just say this, Adesely. I think, and, and please tell me if, if I'm mischaracterizing this from your financial perspective. I think we all know that, you know, we're in trouble with the admissions fund and we've known that, you know, since the February bar exam debacle. But it looks like across the board with everything else, we are for the most part doing better than we, we thought we were going to be doing or, or about, or we're on projection.
Yes, I would say for the other funds, non-grant related funds, those, those usually come, it's funding that we get from primarily the judicial council. Those are fine, the client security fund is well-funded as well. Outside of those funds, yeah, I would say everything is, is right on target.
Okay.
Outside the admissions.
When do you anticipate coming back to us with the quarter three financials?
It should be November, the November meeting, we should have the Q3 financial results.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I think this is an action item, we have to accept this report. Sam, would you mind putting the reso on the, on the screen? Okay, if board members had a chance to review the resolution on the screen, need a motion on item 3.4, the approval of the 2025 quarter two financial statements.
I move. I'll second.
So moved by trustee Grande, seconded by trustee Barahona. Sam, would you call the roll, please?
Barahona?
Hi.
Gore?
Hi.
Grande?
Hi.
Hey, held not present, so off.
Hi.
For I, zero, and A's, motion carries.
Very good.
Arnie, I think we also need the investment report resolution.
Did we do the, I thought we, I thought we did the investment.
Did we do it?
Sam, did we do, did we do that?
Yeah, okay, sorry, I.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Adesely, can I ask you to do one thing for me as well? And that is, I ask you to, to send me the definitions of all the, of all the funds. And I think it might, that might be helpful for particularly the members of the finance committee. We may want to send it to all the board members, but I think for the finance committee members, and this would be, it's definitions on, you know, where we get the money, you know, how the money in the fund, in this particular fund is generated and sort of what authority we have over, over that fund. You know, as long as I've been serving as a finance committee chair, I, I still can mix some of these things up, so, but I think it's really helpful.
Okay, I can do that.
All right, thank you. And with that, I think we're adjourned. The public comment. But there will be, we're getting ready to go into the full board meeting. And so there will be opportunity for public comment then.
And we are live and recording.
Great, thank you. All right, good morning and welcome everybody to the full meeting of the board of trustees. This is our September 18th agenda. I'm going to call this meeting to order and would also remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. I'll start things off by having our board secretary, Sharon Lim, call roll.
Barahona?
Present.
Buena Ventura? Not present. Sis Naros?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Gore?
Here.
Grande?
Here.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Here.
Soell?
Present.
Stallings?
Present.
Stevens?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
And Trejo, not present. Chair, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is a call for public comment. And before, before we begin public comment, I'd like to remind everyone of some of the ground rules for speaking during this meeting, specifically under the state bar's policy regarding public comment. Members of the public cannot cede their time to another speaker. Any attempts to deceive the board by disguising your voice, using different aliases or names to participate in public comment or accent is by extension not allowed as well as impermissible under the state bar's policy against disruptive and/or disorderly conduct that may result in removal from the meeting. We appreciate your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and orderly environment for all attendees. I would also like to remind everyone that under the Bagley Keen Open Meeting Act, public comments must pertain to items that are on the agenda or be related to matters that are within the jurisdiction of this agency. Specifically, the board is the state bar's governing body and is responsible for exercising oversight of the state bar. The board sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee oversees the work of the attorney discipline system. And the RAB agenda will be called tomorrow on our Friday board agenda. At this time, I would like anybody who, who wishes to give public comment to this board to raise their hand. That will give us an idea of how many individuals wish to bring their petitions before, before this body. You can, if you're participating via Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. It's the hand icon, it should appear at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the board, please click on that hand icon now and state bar staff will call on you in the order that hands are raised. For those of you participating via phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. That is the star key, the number nine. Doing so will alert staff, you'd like to make comment, and we will call on you and open your microphone so you can address the board. I believe this is the only noticed location that is participating in today's meeting. Due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than three minutes for each speaker. Please note that staff will have an on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. The timer's three minute, two, excuse me, two-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The on-screen timer will flash throughout the final 10 seconds. We have five individuals who have signed up in advance to provide comments. I understand that we also have several individuals here physically in attendance who wish to give public comment. So we always try and give preference to those who have signed up in advance. So we'll first call on those five who signed up in advance, then we'll go to the in-person and then we'll check the, the Zoom and call-in lines. So Madam Secretary, if you could go through the first five, please?
I do believe we have to take the in-person sign-ups.
Oh, take the in-person first?
Yes, in-person first, and then I'll move to the advanced sign-ups and the remote.
All right, we'll take the in-person first then. So if you'd like to make a public comment, if you could just line up on the left side of the, the speaker dais, please approach the microphone, identify yourself if you could, and then we'll give you two minutes for public comment. All right, sir, if you want to go now to the seat.
I'm confused, you said, you said three and right now you are saying two.
It's, it's two minutes, I misspoke when I said three. Yep. And if you could, just press the microphone button there, it should turn green.
Can you tell me where is my timer, where is it?
It will start when you start speaking, so on the screen there.
Okay. Yeah, so my name is Big Amy and then today I, I'm, I want to talk about the Brown Act concern about several CD attorneys. Number one, before I start my comments, I want to tell you that I was detained downstairs today for roughly 20 minutes. The security guard told me that there is no meeting, sir, I have no business in this building. So I don't know why, and I want someone to take a look at that. Now, so going back to my, to my comments that in the city of Los Angeles, many times that I go there, attend a public meeting, Brown Act meeting and the sign up to speak. And then sometimes they require me, my name, and then they require me to identify myself. And then as far as my Google research tells me that in Brown Act meeting, I am not required to identify myself. Second, that I informed the board secretary, I said, hey, can you inform the board? I identify as a female, I use female gender pronoun, can you please respect me for that? And then the board president, presiding officer, the board secretary continued to calling me as a sir, as a mister, after I repeatedly tell them about that. I do not know if that is considered as okay or that's considered as an ethic violation. Now continuing, I, when I speak about in the Los Angeles Board of Public Works, and that one time, there are three speakers, I am one of the three. However, they never call my card. They told me that signing up as a Big Amy is not allowed to speak. However, I filed a complaint with the city of Los Angeles Attorney's Office. They told me that sometimes there are so many people and then your name is not called to speak, it's considered as okay. I responded, can you check the evidence? There are only three speakers on that day, there's no 100 speakers. But again, every single complaint, it has been denied by Los Angeles City Attorney's Office.
Thank you for your public comment. Next on the in-person signup list, we have Armando Herman.
Yes, good morning. I'd like to bring the violation warnings about denial of rights under the color of law, under 42 U.S.C. 1983 by the city of Los Angeles versus Armando Herman and the public for having attorneys threaten and intimidate us at City Hall during Brown Act meetings. I'm going to give Jonathan Philip Groot, bar number 317217 for the record, to have you investigate whether or not what I'm speaking about are factual constitutional laws or is it the fact that he's liable for causing me mental injuries on the basis of his action on the law? No one here is above the law. I respect the law. I have five TROs against me from the city of Los Angeles. Not one time have I ever acted out in response to what some attorneys accuse me of. Jonathan Groot is a Korean, for all I know, he's a terrorist, doing wrong to individuals such as myself, an American citizen, at my capacity as a citizen of the United States. And I wish for him to stop that, he's coercing people to intimidate me. He's getting the sergeant of arms to, to attack me in public meetings, I'm disabled. What's wrong with that? Doesn't mean that I don't have the ability to speak and think. And that's what the situation is going on in the city of Los Angeles. I'm turning in all these documents in my hand for the record, as you see. Doing with the color of law, doing with 42 U.S.C. 1983, dealing with my facts. These are facts. Donald J. Trump is an excellent president, we love Pam Bondi and her great work. And I emphasize, I emphasize that I don't want to become the next target of a political violence incident in Los Angeles on the city of Whittier for the record.
Thank you for your public comment.
Do I have these two? Thank you, sir.
Mike Greenspan, wanted to talk about something and it's called denial of rights. And it happens with somebody, it happened with somebody in this room, Armando Herman. He was a couple of years ago in a locked courtroom restraining order hearing. That's right, locked. We talk about it happening in Russia, it happened right here. Some, some racist guy named Gary Eto, ETO, he's now down in Torrance, a locked courtroom. So how could somebody be guilty of things that he didn't do? He apparently sent this proton through a landline and it was a completely rigged case. Why don't we compare it to a case where somebody is guilty? Why don't we go back to Atlanta, Georgia, 1913? Some guy, a New York Jew named Leo Frank raped, robbed and murdered a 13-year-old employee at the family pencil factory, Mary Fagan. And when I say that Leo Frank raped, robbed and murdered her, the court backs me up. I'm comparing. I'm comparing court cases. This attitude that just because somebody's in a courtroom, they're guilty. Well, let me tell you, Leo Frank did it, and that was an open courtroom, an open, the public could attend. It was not that racist Eto. And those four supervisors, Holly Mitchell, Mommy Barger, that cunt Janet Han, and Hilda Solis, all making up lies just because they want, I mean, they're four old bags that have some silly fantasies about Armando Herman wanting to do various sexual acts on him that I wouldn't do with a dog's tongue. No offense, Dusty, but you have to put the foot down somewhere. I mean, they're just ugly, vicious liars, and we think it's okay. Well, let me tell you, I got to talk about something that vexes county, and it's wonderful. It's that big, beautiful bill that our wonderful President Donald J. Trump has been behind. Why do I say that? It cut $750 million to those corrupt supervisors, and that's what makes it beautiful. And all these ICE raids. Thank you, President Trump, for saving L.A. from burning, because all Governor Newsom did was jerk his dick, the mayor play with the puss, and the President got something done. ICE, ICE, baby!
All right. Anybody else here in person? All right. Can we go next to our advanced signup on Zoom?
Yes. Next, we have Benjamin Cohn. Your mic has been enabled.
Hello, I wanted to address the recommendation of the CBE.
Mr. Cohn, just a second. We're having some technical issues on our end, I think. You're coming through very faintly.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to address some recommendations by the Committee of Bar Examiners at its September 9 meeting that I hope you will depart from regarding the software to be contracted for the February 2026 and as they recommended, the July 2026 bar exam. The problems with Examsoft are, have been sort of obscured by the problems with Measure, but that doesn't mean that Examsoft's track record is any better. The Examsoft has caused a lot of the problems that could lead you to, lead people to believe that what happened with Measure is a pattern, and the price tag on it is only even close to comparable to the other two vendors if you contract for both a long-term contract with, that locks you in for July, which none of the other vendors are requiring you to do. They would give you flexibility and still give you a slightly better price than that or a much better price than just for February. The most significant problem with Examsoft is that it lacks the functionality, or so it seems, that the other vendors have to do key testing accommodations for remote testing. I realize that you're not allowed to do remote testing as a standard condition under state law as it just passed. However, you want to have the functionality to not need a non-standard exam software for a small number of applicants with disabilities who are still entitled under the, regardless of what the NCBE may or may not say, and they don't seem to be saying what you have indicated in the past, and regardless of a law that doesn't say anything about things that are at the option of the applicant needing notice, and even if it did, would be preempted. So you still have the need to provide remote testing. The other software vendors have that functionality. They are cheaper. They are better. They have, they're more accessible. And Examsoft was still chosen by the CBE just because it's the status quo. That's the kind of thing that snowballs exam cycle to exam cycle and self-reinforces, but causes lots of problems. So I urge you to depart from that recommendation, and I also urge you to seek to make a contract with either ILG or Extagility explicitly supporting remote testing as a testing accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Henri. Your mic has been enabled.
I'm here today to talk about attorney misconduct, which is very much in the subject matter jurisdiction of this Board. And I want to point to one particular case. It has to do with the Brown Act, and it's David Salzberg v. City of L.A. It was very well adjudicated in the Central District of California, where basically the judge ruled that it doesn't matter whether the content of the speech has to do with the subject matter jurisdiction overall. The First Amendment trumps that, and to chill free speech during such open meetings is in fact a civil rights violation directly of the First Amendment. Second of all, I want to actually talk about the attorney misconduct here that aids and abets this particular politically motivated act, which is by the city attorney Heidi Felstein, sort of Los Angeles, and one of her deputies, Jonathan Groth, that you've heard about today. And I want to give you a history of just how nasty of, and a criminal Heidi is. She prosecuted Ben Camacho, who had exercised his right to file a CPRA to get all the LAPD officer photos, ranks, and salaries, and she decided to prosecute criminal charges on him. Ben Camacho beat that entire case, and ended up costing the city at least half a million dollars because she dropped the whole thing, and the judge slammed the city and particularly Heidi for having the audacity to go after a law-abiding citizen for simply filing a writ of a mandate as his God-given right to pursue action in a court of law. I even contacted Nathan Hawkeman's office as to who is supposed to enforce the Brown Act issues. You know what Nathan Hawkeman's office said at the L.A. County? He said, it is not within their jurisdiction. You know what Heidi's office said? It's not within theirs jurisdiction. Then why the hell does their own policy and charter say, in fact, it is? So we have two different city offices. We have the county DA and the city attorney saying they don't enforce the Brown Act. So if they don't enforce it, why do you get to enforce? Who does and who does not violate the Brown Act?
I have concluded. Next, we have Pablo Ramirez. Your mic has been enabled.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First and foremost, I want to begin by, I am helping my daughter move into college. However, I just wanted to take a moment. I feel strongly about Agenda Item 6.7, so I'll start with that. Good morning. My name is Pablo Ramirez, and I serve as Executive Director of the Legal Aid Society of San Bernardino. We're a small nonprofit of fewer than 45 staff attorneys, serving two of California's largest counties, San Bernardino and Riverside County. We're also among the state's largest legal desertists are basically located in our two counties. The 2024 Justice Gap study made clear what we live every day. The overwhelming majority of low-income Californians face serious civil legal problems, and most go without any legal help. For an organization of our size, every tool and every innovation model makes the difference between turning people away and delivering justice. So thanks to the Office of Access and Inclusion and the Legal Aid Justice Tech Collaborative, we were able to participate in pilots we could have never accessed otherwise, like ChatGPT, Vincent AI, and Co-Counsel. Each gave us the opportunity to test and explore how responsible AI can strengthen legal aid. For the past months, we have been using Co-Counsel in our daily work, and the impact has been transformative. It has allowed us to increase the number of clients we serve every day, speed up urgent case responses, and deliver consistent, high-quality services, all while reducing the risk of burnout for our small team. In less than half a year, it has become an indispensable tool in our effort to defend vulnerable clients, especially when powerful landlords, corporations, or builders attempt to take advantage of our rural residents who otherwise would have no lawyer at their side. That is why I strongly support ONI's leadership and the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission's work in advancing both legal technology and innovative workforce models like the Community Justice Worker Program. Just as technology has expanded our passing, CJWs have the potential. All right, sorry. All right.
Next, we have Claire. Your mic has been enabled.
Good morning. This is Claire Solot from the Legal Service Thunders Network. I'm very pleased to be able to attend today's meeting. I wanted to draw your attention to some of the materials provided with regards to where the February 2026 bar exam will be offered. I'm raising this issue because it appears from the materials that there will be no test site north of San Mateo. As you all know, there are more than five law schools that are from San Francisco and north, as well as in Berkeley, and the law students that we work with primarily are first-gen law students, low-income folks where the cost of having to commute to a bar exam are a huge barrier for them to be able to practice. In addition, the vast majority of our fellows go into public interest work or work for small law firms, which are two of the main areas that this body is hoping to support. So in looking at choices when it comes to where the bar exam will be administered, I hope this is taken into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair Stallings, I do not see any more raised hands in the attendee list.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I do see two just popped up.
All right.
Next, we have Rian Pacheco. Your mic has been enabled.
Hi, I'm sorry. I believe I signed up, but I didn't get called. So good morning, Board Trustees and State Bar Staff. My name is Rian Pacheco. I'm with the Legal Aid Association of California. We are grateful that the State Bar staff have dedicated some time today to discuss the Community Justice Workers Program as part of the Justice Gap Study Conversation. We view the two as being related initiatives in an effort to close the justice gap in this state. The legal aid community is deeply involved with this issue and sees CJWs as a solution to increase access to legal services to low-income Californians. LAC values the State Bar and Board Trustees' commitment to this issue and look forward to continuing to work together to close the gap. Additionally, regarding Item 7.2, Amendments to the Rural Professional Conduct 7.3, we appreciate the State Bar's work to address the practice of attorney soliciting respondents in domestic violence restraining orders cases before service, which undermines petitioners' safety and the integrity of the process. LAC supports the proposed amendments to Rule 7.3, including Subdivision F. However, the recent addition tying the role to a lawyer's pecuniary motive creates an enforcement gap. Regardless of motive, early solicitation places petitioners at risk. If adoption as amended is the only option, we support moving forward, but we urge close monitoring and consideration of future revisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie Poppy. Your mic has been enabled.
Hello, my name's Carrie. I'm an accountability reporter. I was sexually abused by my lawyer, who was a pro bono media lawyer. And, oh, sorry, can you hear me? I'm getting a pop-up.
Yes, you can.
And I went through the complaint process about Rule 8.1, and I discovered in my research that it appears no lawyer in California has been prosecuted under Rule 8.1 as long as it has been active. I guess I just, I'm here to draw especially the attention of the women on the Board to this problem and the fact that the only recourse I was given was to go to a Walker petition. The Walker petitions never work. I'm sure you know that. So I'll just keep showing up, I guess. I'm that desperate to help the other people who have been sidelined by this process, so I guess I'll just keep showing up. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have G. Serab. Your mic has been enabled.
Hello, I definitely signed up to speak. I'm Greg Serab. I'm the CEO of Extagility, and I have a comment about exam software. Can I speak before Item 6.3?
Yes.
Okay, and may I get the three minutes?
This is your opportunity to address the Board during public comment, so please, you can direct your comments to that item.
I'm going to repeat the, I'm the CEO of Extagility. As I said, I'm going to repeat the main points in the letter I sent to the committee of bar examers yesterday. I have some serious concerns about the software selection process from the September 9 meeting. We put together a presentation of very short notice, and we don't think it was met with a fair or adequate effort to consider our proposal. Three aspects are especially troubling. One, there was an improper pricing standard. Somebody else had mentioned we were directed to offer one for February 26 only, but the current provider was able to get in an offer of a discounted price for multiple sessions. Under the rubric we were working from, our offer should have received full points for pricing. However, abandonment of the rubric, we were asked to respond. Within the context of a rubric and point system, it wasn't used. The main basis for the committee's decision appeared to be that there wasn't any obvious reason to change providers, yet identifying such a reason is the entire purpose of a rubric. It absolutely could have exposed a different outcome. They had a principled basis for a decision, and they abandoned it. Final, the third factor is the grossly inadequate time for decision-making. They have 14 minutes. They left themselves 14 minutes. People spend more time picking a movie on Netflix. The committee should have planned and deliberated better, and failing that, they should have deferred. I've had a long career enabling and supporting law school and bar exams nationwide. I watched tens of thousands of aspiring lawyers being tested on their readiness. I know what lawyerly success looks like and sounds like, and I did not see that last Tuesday. California has the nation's largest bar exam, and a lot to gain by optimizing its exam software. It has options. It should have investigated them in more detail, and it should have spent much more time in discussion. If it's to withstand scrutiny by our applicants, the public, and the court, the selection process requires immediate correction, up to and including reexamination of the committee's decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any more advanced signups or any raised hands.
All right, thank you. We will close this aspect of the meeting, close public comments, and we'll go on to a couple other items. Before we get into the bulk of the agenda, I would just want to note that on Friday, September 19, we will hold the swearing-in ceremony. We'll take up the consent calendar, which is Section 5, and convene as the Board of Trustees sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee, which is identified as Section 7. We'll go then to Item 2, which is the Chair's Report. And before I get into the Chair's Report, I understand the microphone has been rested away from me, so to speak, by Vice Chair Sis Narros.
Thank you, Chair Stallings. And at this time, I'm honored to join some of my, all of my colleagues as we recognize the incredible work of our outgoing Chair, Brandon Stallings. And with that, I believe we have a resolution that we would like to bestow upon you, Brandon, at this time, and I will have the honor of reading it once we get a chance for everyone to see it in its greatness. Do you mind holding it?
I can hold it, sure.
Thank you. And I will read it. Whereas in 2015, the State Bar of California embarked on a decade of reform to strengthen accountability, transparency, and its core mission of public protection; and whereas on January 1, 2018, a pivotal restructuring separated the State Bar's regulatory functions from its trade association role, creating the California Lawyers Association, enabling the State Bar to focus exclusively on its public protection mission; and whereas Brandon Stallings was appointed by the California Supreme Court in 2015 to the State Bar Board of Trustees, reappointed in 2022, and over his tenure provided steady leadership during this periodic period of historic change; and whereas Mr. Stallings played a significant role in advancing governance initiatives, serving as Vice Chair of the Board from 2021 to 2022 and as Chair beginning in 2023; and whereas in 2021, the Board created the Ad-Hoc Commission on the Discipline System to review fairness, equity, and the efficiency in attorney discipline, and Mr. Stallings chaired and co-chaired committees critical to that work, helping adopt recommendations to reduce disparities and strengthen procedural justice; and whereas as a deputy district attorney with the Kern County District Attorney's Office assigned to the Special Victims Unit, Mr. Stallings brought prosecutorial experience and Central Valley perspective to the Board, ensuring representation of California's diverse communities; and whereas he chaired the Regulation and Discipline Committee Programs Committee, Audit Committee, and other key bodies contributing to reforms in fiscal oversight, governance, and discipline; and whereas his leadership as Chair of the Board during 2023 to 2025 embodied the State Bar's ongoing commitment to transparency, accountability, and equity, ensuring the reform trajectory continued to advance; therefore, now be it resolved that the State Bar of California commends Brandon Stallings for his extraordinary service and leadership during one of the most significant eras of reform in the organization's history. Be it further resolved that this resolution be presented to Brandon Stallings with the Board's deepest appreciation for his contributions and be entered into the official records of the State Bar of California as his term concludes in September 2025. Congratulations, Brandon.
That was a long list. Thank you to my friends and colleagues here on the board. I'm going to try and get through this. It's definitely a lot of emotions this morning. People have asked, you know, if I'm relieved, happy, maybe a little bit of both, but I think the feelings are absolutely complicated because of the time that I've spent here and the individuals I've met. And seeing this as my farewell address, I just, there's so many people to thank, and so I just beg for your indulgence for just a, for a little bit here. But I want to welcome everybody, want to wish you a good morning to board, staff, and those who care about the work of the State Bar. This is my last board meeting as Chair and as Board of Trustee member. As I reflect back on the last 10 years of service, I'm reminded of the quote, "It is so hard to leave until you leave, and then it is the easiest thing in the world." So what has made it so hard to leave the bar? Was it the oftentimes grueling board meetings stretching into the evening hours, kind of reminiscent of Stockholm syndrome? Was it consuming hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of written reports every week? I know beyond any doubt that it was the importance of this work, the work of regulating the legal profession, and making sure that we, as an organization, continued our arc towards excellence. What made it difficult to leave was the privilege to be around so many people, some of the most impressive, dedicated, brilliant, funny, and all-around good people one could ever hope to meet, let alone work with. The opportunity to work with my first State Bar President, David Pasternak, and to see how he handled immensely stressful situations involving the bifurcation of the bar and the cleaning house, which has led to so many exceptional reforms. The ability to work with former Chair Alan Steinbrecher and be appointed by him to serve alongside Justice Curry, Kern County Superior Court Judge David Wolf, President of California Lawyers Association, Jeremy Evans, and all of the dedicated, brilliant legal minds that made up that civility commission. The blessing of serving alongside one of my best friends on the board, Jason Lee, and seeing how he ensured that diversity, equity, and inclusion continued to be the heart and soul of this organization. And most recently passed Chair Ruben Duran, who definitely handled the Girardi crisis and worked to ensure that something like that would not happen again, all while protecting the public in a different way by directing the work of the Ad-Hoc Commission on the Discipline System to ensure that the disparate impact on minorities was studied and solutions implemented to ensure justice and equality. Some other memorable projects that come to mind over the last 10 years involve working with Melanie Lawrence on the Probation Redesign Project, working with Randy Defentorum on the 10 Hours of MCL for New Lawyers Working Group, collaborating with State Bar Court, including our interim Executive Director, Erica Doherty, on regulation and discipline issues, attending town halls with Leah Wilson as we sought a fee increase, and appearing in front of the legislature and advocating for the work of our organization. As a prosecutor from a rural county, I truly cannot believe that I was entrusted to do these things, and I am humbled that I was able to try and make an impact. I want to thank Chief Justice Guerrero for appointing me to this role, and to Neil Gupta at the Supreme Court for your continued trust and confidence in me. To Senator Umberg and Assembly Member Ash Colra, it was a pleasure working with you and your staff over the past four years. The job you do to protect the public and to ensure the bar is on that straight and narrow path is immensely appreciated and has set our organization on a continued path towards excellency. The work of this board and anything that I could claim to have done in the past decade would not be possible without our exceptional staff. When this organization is comprised of over 600 employees, it's impossible to name everyone, but I want to mention a few, including my first executive director I served with, Elizabeth Parker, and General Counsel Vanessa Holton. I learned so much from both of you in my first term as trustee, and will never forget you and those lessons. I'll never forget staff like Francisco Gomez, my first Board Secretary, Dad McLeod, who gave me an appreciation for house statistics, can be fun. They're still fun. Sarah Cohen, who poured her heart and soul into the appointment process. Those are just a few of the golden oldies. And more recently, thank you to interim OCT Melanie Lawrence, Steve Moat, and our current OCTC head honcho, George Cardona. The sheer number of complaints you and your crew handle is impressive. You do it with professionalism and aplomb, and as a prosecutor, I'm impressed by your dedication to upholding the rule of law. I have so much admiration for our executive staff and department heads, and am thoroughly impressed by your hard work and tireless dedication to protecting the public. To call out just a few, Donna Herschkowitz, sitting there in the back, you have truly transformed the Office of Governmental Affairs. You made it your own, and we are in a much better place because of your diplomacy. R. Selena Montoya Chico, also, I think, still sitting in the back, you have continued the exceptional work of your predecessors, and I know we are in good hands as we consider financial issues and rely upon you and your team to work through these complicated positions. Former Board Secretary, which I'm pleased to see also in the back, Luis Arpetian, your work as Board Secretary was incredibly important. None of us realize how much you do behind the scenes, but all of it is appreciated, and you were greatly missed. However, Sharon Lim, your successor, is picking up right where you left off and has not missed a beat, and we're, I am just so thankful for your hard work in that. Erica Doherty, our interim Executive Director, who knew that back in the day when we were discussing State Bar Court minutia and rules and rad this and rad that, that one day we would be working side by side to help run this organization? I'm so proud of you and the work you do, and it's been an absolute joy to close out my term with you, with you serving as Executive Director. These next few are the toughest because I've worked so closely with them over the last two years as Chair. Eileen Deftian, you came into an organization that desperately needed your sage advice and counsel. You have made this role your own, united the two geographic offices of OGC, and have helped us navigate through exceedingly treacherous waters. I know the sacrifice that it is for you to work as hard as you do. I'm eternally grateful that you have chosen to invest your skill into the bar. I've said this before in the past, and I hope she's listening right now, but the bar would not be the organization it is today without the exceptional leadership of Leah Wilson. Leah was asked by this board to accomplish some impossible tasks. She took them on in a methodical way, with her eye continually towards progress and doing the best she could in untenable situations. Her grasp of the organization and her strategic approach has set us on a path of organizational excellency. And as a new Executive Director takes the helm, I know that the new Executive Director, while having big shoes to fill, will absolutely continue to transform this organization and rebuild the trust of our stakeholders and the Californians we serve. I'm so fortunate to be able to work with exceptional board members and want to call a few of them out. They include now Judge Terry Wiley, former Chair Sean Saleig, Maryam Krensky, Renee Lebron, Danette Myers, Hyland Chin, and as one person so eloquently referred unknowingly at the time to my fellow quote-unquote Cal County trustee, Mark Broughton, I want to thank him for being that vanguard in the Central Valley. Trustee Barahona, I think you're the only remaining, after I leave, only remaining Cal County or Central Valley trustee, so you've got to keep that Central Valley faith alive, and I have the utmost of confidence in you. It's been an absolute pleasure to chair our current board. It is said that a body is as strong as its weakest link, and on this board, there are no weak links. Our strengths unite us, and I've seen firsthand the power of each individual on this board lending their time and talent to address the problems we are called to solve. I'm so thankful to be able to work with such wonderful people, and know you are in exceptional hands with incoming Chair Sisneros and incoming Vice Chair Tony. Jose, I could not have asked for a better vice chair. You always said yes when I asked you to take on a challenge. It is apparent to all that your steady and calm leadership style has been born out of your wealth of experience in running government. The bar is truly blessed to have a person of your caliber at the helm. Mark, your boundless enthusiasm for organizational excellency, as well as your ability to ask the difficult and timely questions, is greatly appreciated, and we are blessed to have your experience in this leadership role. In closing, I want to thank some friends and family. Without these people, I would not be here. I'd like to thank my father-in-law and former trustee, David Torres, for encouraging me to run for the fifth DCA trustee position way back in 2015. I did not know what I was getting into, and I don't know if knowing now what I know, now know, I don't know if I would have gotten into it. But this truly has been a transformative position for me to be in, and I am leaving a fundamentally changed and different person. To my parents, thank you for leading by example and showing me from a young age how a professional can serve by donating time and talent to organizations like the Salvation Army and serving on professional boards, all while raising nine boys and running a business. I get my inspiration from you. I'd like to thank my office, the Kern County District Attorney's Office, and Kern County District Attorney Cynthia Zimmer for allowing flexibility to handle this massive responsibility. It has been my absolute privilege to represent Kern County in this capacity, and I hope that I won't be the last person from Kern County to chair this impressive board. The why of so many decisions I made and the sacrifices made during the last 10 years comes down to providing a better future for my two daughters. They're half Latina, full of energy, brimming with excitement about the future, and I can't help but get swept up in their youthful enthusiasm and fight for a future for them that is brighter than the past. To my wife Alexia, thank you for sacrificing so much, including the ability to be here today due to making sure our daughters are cared for, all while being the managing partner at your firm and past president of the Kern Bar. I've learned from your firm but gentle leadership style, and I'm so grateful for the role model you are to our daughters. I could not have gotten through the last 10, let alone the last two intense years, without your love, guidance, wisdom, and support. I love you, and I thank you. So going back to the quote, I know everybody wants it come to an end, but the, going back to the quote, "It is so hard to leave until you leave, and then it's the easiest thing in the world." I'm not sure if that last part holds up, but I'm going to try this goodbye thing out. This farewell is made all the more difficult, but also sweeter because of you, the people I serve in the trenches with. Thank you for a lifetime of memories and privilege of a lifetime to serve in this role. Thank you, and God bless.
And with that, I'd like to ask for a resolution to pass this remarkable document.
No debate?
First moved by Tony, seconded by trustee Gore. We'll call vote, please.
Can we all be recorded as seconding? Is that possible?
Sure.
Many seconds.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura, not present. Sisneros?
Yes.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. And Stallings.
I object for the record. Will abstain.
With 10 ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you. Okay, let's try and get this meeting back on track. Don't put the mushy stuff. That's right. Nothing is less mushy than an interim executive director's report, but we have some exciting things, so let's go 3.1.
Thank you. I just wanted to give the board a very brief update on a new request from the California Supreme Court. As this board is aware, in November of 2023, at the direction and approval of the board, the State Bar Standing Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, referred to as COPRAC, published the Practical Guidance for the Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence in the Practice of Law. This document was created to help lawyers understand their ethical obligations when using generative AI systems. It's been nearly two years since that document was approved, and on August 22 of this year, the California Supreme Court directed that the State Bar take this guidance a step further. Specifically, the court has directed the State Bar to consider whether the guiding principles provided in that November 2023 Practical Guidance Document should be incorporated into the comments to the Rules of Professional Conduct, as well as consider whether any additional guidance should be warranted in light of recent or upcoming generative AI developments, including possible agentic AI use by attorneys. Staff has shared this request with the Office of Professional Competence, which is within the Division of Regulation. The Office of Professional Competence supports COPRAC, and COPRAC has already reconvened its Generative AI Working Group so that the committee may consider any changes to the comments to the rules. Those comments, if approved by COPRAC, would come to this board and ultimately to the Supreme Court for adoption.
All right. Exciting times ahead. Thank you for that. We'll go into Item 4, which are open session minutes. I'm going to be taking these as a group. This is 4.1, Approval of May 22 through 23, Board of Trustees' Open Session Minutes. June 5, 2025, Open Session Minutes. July 3, Open Session Minutes. We are withdrawing the approval of the August 14, 2025, Board of Trustees' Open Session Minutes from the joint meeting with the Committee of Bar Examiners, so show 4.4 withdrawn. And then Item 4.5, which is Approval of September 4, Board of Trustees' Open Session Minutes. Any trustees wish to add or delete anything from these minutes? And if not, may I have a motion and a second to combine Items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.5 into a single item for purposes of approval?
So, quick question. I was not able to attend the July 3, so I would want to abstain on those meeting minutes. Can I still vote if it's a package?
Yeah, we'll just make a record that you're abstaining from the July 3. I think the minutes will...
Thank you.
And I'll abstain from 4.1, the May open session minutes, as I was not in attendance then.
And I'll abstain from the September 4.
And I'll abstain from the June 5.
All right. Understanding that there will be those abstentions, can I have a first and a second?
So moved.
Move to approve.
All right. First by Vice Chair Sisneros, second by trustee Stevens. May I have a roll call vote?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura, not present. Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye, with the extension noted.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present. Huser?
Aye.
Soell? Is not present. Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. And Stallings.
Aye.
With nine ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. So at this point, we're going to go into closed session. The board will be going into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 111-26, subdivisions A, subdivision 1, subdivision E, sub 2, sub A, and E, sub 2, sub B, sub I, to discuss five agendaized matters. And so, ask that the room be cleared of individuals who are not involved in those presentations. I would anticipate we're going to come out of closed session. Close our estimate. Probably... Two o'clock. All right. I'm going to estimate we'll come back into open session at about 2:00. And so, members of the public are not allowed in during closed session. I appreciate your understanding, and thank you for your participation today.
We are live and recording.
All right. Welcome back. This is the Board of Trustees. We are out of closed session. We are returning to open session and have the following to announce as reportable actions regarding our Executive Director search and our Chief Trial Counsel reappointment. Following the board's approval in closed session at its September 4, 2025 meeting, I am making a conditional offer of employment to Laura Enderton Speed to the position of Executive Director for the State Bar of California, and delegated authority to the Chair and Vice Chair to negotiate appropriate terms of employment. Today, the board acted to appoint Laura Enderton Speed as the Executive Director for the State Bar of California for a term of four years, subject to confirmation by the Senate and other applicable limits prescribed by law. Ms. Enderton Speed is expected to begin performing duties of Executive Director on November 3, 2025. So please, join us in congratulating Ms. Enderton Speed on this new appointment. Below is the board's resolution and the roll call vote. The resolution read, "Resolve that the Board of Trustees appoints Laura Enderton Speed to the position of Executive Director for the State Bar of California for a term of four years, subject to the Senate confirmation, applicable timing, and other requirements as set forth by Business and Professions Code, Section 6011. And that she begin to perform the duties of the Executive Director on the start date as negotiated with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board." Our Board Secretary is putting up the roll call vote, reflecting a unanimous decision by the board with several absences, but we are pleased that Ms. Enderton Speed will be joining us. We look forward to her tenure here at the State Bar and for just the wealth of experience that she brings in governmental relations and in program development. joining us. We look forward to her tenure here at the State Bar and for just the wealth of experience that she brings in governmental relations and in program development specifically designed to restore trust in institutions and for organizational excellence. So, later on today, the board will have a chance to see Laura, and we look forward to her getting onboarded. The second, okay, oh, I'm sorry, that was for the... Yeah, let me just announce then the roll call vote from today's board meeting then. Again, a unanimous decision to appoint Ms. Enderton Speed, 10 ayes, zero nays, several absences, and again, all trustees shared in their support of this candidate. The second item I want to report out on is that the board acted in closed session to approve reappointment of George Cardona, the current Chief Trial Counsel, for an additional term of four years, subject to the Senate confirmation and the timing requirements as prescribed by law. And we congratulate Mr. Cardona on this reappointment and look forward to continuing to work with him. So, give it up for George. All right, it's too late, George, you can't get out of it now. Okay, "Resolved that the Board of Trustees reappoints George Cardona as the Chief Trial Counsel for the State Bar of California, CTC, for an additional term of four years, subject to the Senate confirmation, applicable timing, and other requirements as set forth by Business and Professions Code 6079.5, Government Code Sections 1774 and applicable law, and he begin to perform the duties of Chief Trial Counsel under this reappointment starting on October 4, 2025. There's a further resolve that the Board of Trustees authorize Chair and Vice Chair to negotiate the employment terms of reappointment with George Cardona if appropriate." The roll call vote from our September 18, 2025, closed session meeting was zero nays, nine ayes, and it was unanimous decision to reappoint Mr. Cardona to this position. So, Mr. Cardona, Godspeed. Thank you so much for your excellent service. Please pass along to your team just our extreme thanks for all the work that you guys do. Okay, that is big news, fantastic news, and just super stoked, but I think super stoked is a legal term that we'll use. But we'll now go into our business items. This is Section 6 of the Board of Trustees' Open Session Agenda. We're going to take on 6.1. This is update and action if appropriate on admission and bar exam. And this is being presented by Donna Herschewitz and Program Director Audrey Ching. So, welcome back, Donna and Ms. Ching.
Thank you very much. Sharon, if you can...
Donna, if I don't mind, just interrupt for a sec. Could we get that TV turned back on now?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
And we have a lengthy PowerPoint that I will not go through slide by slide. Sharon, if you can post the PowerPoint. Thank you. Does this work?
Doesn't think it works.
Okay, next slide. So, today Audrey and I are going to talk to you about a number of things in our admissions update. The July 2025 bar exam key data and some of the results from our post-exam survey. From the February 2025 bar exam, key takeaways and lessons learned. For the February, the upcoming February 2026 bar exam, we'll give you a status update. Little update on legislation as it relates to our, your thought, your process for developing the cost-benefit analysis and making a decision about the bar exam of the future. A status update on the provisional licensure program, which, the new program, which opened on September 1, and an update on the upcoming October 2025 exams for the first-year law student exam and the several legal specialization exams. I, this is, there are, I think, 41 slides in this deck. We are not going to go through 41 slides, but I did want to make sure to post for the public, and so they do have access to all of this information, including the survey data, which I think is really interesting, but we will just go through that very quickly. Next slide. Next slide. So, quickly by the numbers, we had 7,740 test takers that attended the July 2025 exam. Next slide. Of these, 1,026 had one or more testing accommodations, and as you can see on the right side of this slide, nearly all those who were granted testing accommodations had among those accommodations extended time. Next slide. As we have for every exam since the October 2020 exam, we conducted a survey immediately following the exam to get some feedback from the test takers. I'm just going to point out on this slide, because we'll talk about some of the other stuff in the next slides, we had a really low response rate. The response rate for this survey was 20%. As you may recall, when we did the survey after the February 2025 exam, the response rate was, what, 66%, as I recall, which was very high. Typically, their response rate hovers just over 30%. So this is low. I think my data people would say, therefore, that makes this suggestive and not sort of definitive data. Next slide. So this is one that I wanted to highlight. Looking at the four exams on this slide, the July 2025 exam had the highest satisfaction rate. Looking at the somewhat satisfied and very satisfied categories combined, at 51%, it was higher than all of the three previous exams. Next slide. Very few of our survey respondents reported issues with technology. 89% had no issues with technology. Higher, a higher percentage of no incidents than the July 24 exam. Next slide. And we're going to skip over this, we're going to skip over the next couple of slides. Next slide. Okay. So, this slide I found particularly interesting, starting in the survey that we did in February 2025, we asked about the quality of the multiple choice questions and the impression of the multiple choice questions, and we thought it was important to ask those same questions again with the July 2025 exam as we returned to the multiple choice questions that are drafted by the National Conference of Bar Examiners. And you'll see that although a much smaller percentage of test takers in July 2025 took issue with the NCBEs, MBE, the percentage of test takers who felt the questions were legally incorrect, or the questions had zero answers, or more, had zero answer or more than one answer, still remained fairly high. Just taking a quick look, questions which were, the questions containing content which seemed to be legally incorrect, 28% for the July 2028 exam agreed, strongly agreed or somewhat agreed with that, compared with 65% in February. 50% for the July exam felt that there were questions where the answer options, where none of the answer options were correct. And in this July exam, 73% reported that there were questions where several answer options seemed correct. So, I found this interesting, this statistic interesting, which is why I wanted to present it to you. Next slide. Also on the multiple choice questions, just a couple here to point out, we asked about whether the question difficulty aligned with the test taker's expectations based on past practice exams that they had taken and study materials that they had taken. Forty, only 43% felt that the question difficulty aligned with what they had studied, certainly a lot higher than February, which was at 26%, but still below 50% felt like the difficulty aligned with their expectations. And then, the final one on this slide, we asked about whether the topics that were covered were relevant to the material that the test taker studied. This one got over 50%, at 63% feeling that the topics covered were relevant to the material I studied, but that still leaves a fairly significant 47% that, 37% that felt like the material was not relevant. Next slide. We also asked about testing accommodations. Interestingly, the survey respondents, the breakdown of survey respondents between those who had testing accommodations and those who didn't was pretty similar to the overall test takers who had testing accommodations and those who didn't. We asked about, for the accommodations that the test takers were approved for, were they satisfied with, how satisfied were they with how those accommodations were implemented? And 74% indicated that they were somewhat satisfied or very satisfied. Obviously, we want 100% to be satisfied or very satisfied, and we want to look into that 16% that was very dissatisfied or somewhat dissatisfied, but 74% were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied, and I think that's something that we should be proud of. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. So, I thought this result was interesting. Again, there were only 20% of the test takers who responded to the survey, but we have been asking in our surveys about whether people prefer remote or in-person, and there was a significant drop with this post-exam survey, with only 29% reporting that their preference would be for a remote exam from their own location. You can see that going back to February 24, we went 64%, 51%, 49%. And we had had numerous conversations after the February exam that despite the challenges that a lot of people experienced at the February exam, nonetheless, and nonetheless, 49% still said at the time that they preferred a remote exam from their own location, and that was with an incredibly high response rate that we had, and a high response rate of where nearly everybody who responded reported that they had experienced technological difficulties. So, we thought that was particularly telling. And again, because it's suggestive, I'm not totally sure what to take away from this drop from 49% to 29%, but it was significant, and so something that I wanted to bring to your attention. We're going to skip the next couple of slides on demographics. So, moving on, or moving back, I guess, in time from the July 2025 exam, going back to February 2025, both the Committee of Bar Examiners and the board have been asking us to catalog the lessons learned or the key takeaways from the February 2025 exams. As the board knows, the Committee of Bar Examiners and the board have a very important recommendation to make in the coming months about the future of the bar exam. And understanding, you know, what the challenges were and what caused the challenges from the February 2025 exam is important to ensure that we digest that information in making future recommendations. The... Next slide. So I don't think it'll be helpful to go through these one by one, but I just did want to highlight for the board the different categories where we have implemented or at least planned for process improvements based on what we have learned. Perhaps this is not an exhaustive list of the categories and the process improvements based on February 2025 experience, but this is what we have to date. The areas that are highlighted here are planning, advanced planning, contracting, the content validation process, transparency, issue escalation, and project management. Again, I think this is helpful for folks to go through later, but in light of where we are in our time constraints, let's move forward to the February 2026 bar exam status update.
Yeah, that's my...
Keep going.
Okay, next slide. This is a pretty brief from me. The February 2026 bar exam application will open October 1. The Committee of Bar Examiners has recommended to you, and it's coming up in the contracts item for admissions, for exam software, to be the software for that exam and for July, and we'll talk about July 2026 as well. These are the confirmed sites that you'll see on the contracts item, large sites, Ontario Convention Center, Chula Vista Elite Athlete Training Center, that's the Olympic Training Center in Chula Vista in the San Diego area, accommodated sites also at Ontario, Hotel Farah, which is near Anaheim, Westin LAX, the LA State Bar Office, Golden Gate University, and Hilton Arden West, which is in Sacramento. We have two larger sites on hold in the Bay Area, San Mateo Event Center and the San Jose Convention Center. We do not have any standard testing site on hold or starting to contract with in the Sacramento area at this time. We are also looking for another smaller standard site in the Los Angeles area. Next slide. I think this is back to Donna.
Audrey, before we move on, do you want to talk a little bit about, because we did have a public commenter who was talking about the lack of site...
Yeah, I can actually, I can do it now. I have a slide that I made as part of the contracts item, but I could do, I made a slide that talks through all the different places we've done outreach to in Northern California. Do you want me to...
If you could talk to that now, I think that'd be great.
Sure. Okay, maybe you could take it down, just because I have a visual, Sharon, sorry. Okay, well... Well, you weren't close. I made this visual about all the outreach we've done. So, like I said, we have the San Mateo Event Center and the San Jose Convention Center on hold. In the Sacramento area, we've looked at Travis Air Force Base and Mather, but those require federal access clearance for all attendees, so that's a difficult logistical concern. And then I made a table of all the other sites that we've contacted. Many of our traditional sites are not available, like Oakland Convention Center, SAFE, Credit Union, The Grounds, those are, none of those are available. We've gone and outreach at other places that you can see. We've done, we've got a lot of different tips and people forwarding us places to check out, and some of them are just too small or not a good fit in terms of pillars, or they aren't open for the hours we need them to be open, they don't have the ability for us to bring in our own security. So that's kind of a list of those kinds of places. Moscone, for example, in San Francisco requires a commitment of 1,500 sleeping rooms, so you have to commit to having that many hotel rooms along with your booking, so that's not possible for us. And then we're waiting to hear back from that last column. There's a place that was referred to us from one of the law schools, Galt Academy, Cal State East Bay, Golden One Center, which is very large in Sacramento, Bill Graham Civic Auditorium, and some spaces at UC Davis, so we will keep you updated.
I wanted to just give trustees an opportunity, if you wanted to ask Audrey any questions about those testing sites before we moved on.
Anybody have any questions for that, for that item? Keep seeing none?
Okay, Sharon, if you could put the presentation back up? If you can back up? Okay, perfect. Next slide. So as a result of the February 2025 bar exam administration, there's been more legislative interest and involvement in the bar exam issues than we typically see. And we've talked about each of these pieces of legislation before, but we've now reached the end of the legislative session, and these bills are all in their final form, so I just wanted to highlight those three particular pieces of legislation that impact the bar exam. There is SB 253-Umburg, which is the annual legislation that authorizes the State Bar to set its licensing fee. In that, that bill, we, and relevant to the board's decision-making going forward in terms of our planning and rollout and timeline for a future bar exam, SB 253 requires that we provide 18 months' notice... we provide 18 months' notice when we, to transition from the multi-state bar exam for the multiple choice to a different vendor. It had been two years, but it was, in the last set of amendments, changed to 18 months. It does now specify, however, a two-year notice for delivering the exam remotely. And then some language changes were made at our request that clarify that the four-month notice for changes to the exam delivery platform, refer to those, refer to changes that affect the user experience, don't refer to changes that are required for security reasons, don't apply to changes that are required because, for example, Microsoft or Apple has put out a new operating system and the exam software platform doesn't, isn't compatible with it. So understanding that there are those kinds of changes that could happen that we wouldn't have control over. When I was speaking with Senator Umberg's staff, they had no desire, nor did we, that this language would prevent us from putting on a bar exam if, you know, within four months, suddenly, you know, a new operating system came out and the software had to be changed. So they were very amenable to language that would limit that. It was really things that were affecting the user experience and without those limitations. SB 47, also by Senator Umberg, requires an audit of the state bar specifically with regard to the administration of the February 2025 bar exam. It's looking at a few areas, procurement of measure learning and Kaplan Exam Services, administration of the exam itself, the use of artificial intelligence, that was the last, most recent amendments that came, that were added, and also in the most recent amendments to the bill, looking at the costs specifically, how much did we think going to a remote exam would save? And as a result of the administration of the exam, litigation expenses, investigation expenses, remedies that we've provided, what in fact did it cost us to put on that exam? The bill also has an urgency clause, which means that it is effective upon signature by the governor. And finally, AB 484 by Assemblywoman Dixon requires a report by November 30, 2026, on whether adopting a uniform bar exam would be more efficient and lower cost. All three of these bills are currently awaiting action by the governor. AB 484, I will mention again on the next slide, as we talk about bringing to the Board, there are a schedule for bringing to the Board the cost-benefit analysis and the recommendations for the future of the bar exam. So what I'd like to do is just set forth a plan for how the Board and CBE will develop their recommendations for the future bar exam. Those recommendations that you will develop will necessarily flow from the cost-benefit analysis that was directed by the draft revisions to the Title IX rules that the Supreme Court had put out. On this slide, I just sort of broke out in a way that makes sense to me, the discrete components of what has to be included in that cost-benefit analysis. Next slide. So we've developed what is an aggressive schedule, but necessarily aggressive schedule in order to bring that cost-benefit analysis and recommendation to you. You'll see here, we are starting next month, going to the Committee of Bar Examiners with a more in-depth discussion of the three bar exam options that were presented to the joint meeting of the Board and the Committee of Bar Examiners on August 14. Along with that, it will be a discussion of the first three components that I had listed on the prior slide for, of the cost-benefit analysis. That is, what are the tangible and intangible benefits of each of the options, what goals each would accomplish, and if there are other ways to achieve those goals, and what technology is required and whether that technology, those technological changes would place an undue burden on examines. We'll then follow up that discussion at the CBE meeting with an update to you all at the November Board meeting, just letting you know what we talked about at the Committee of Bar Examiners. Then the following month, December 2025, we will present the rest of the, we'll present a draft of the cost-benefit analysis, filling in the rest of the components, including, because it really does fit in here, the report that's required by AB 484, asking about whether administering the next gen would be more efficient and lower cost. It fits in very nicely with the cost-benefit analysis. The idea then would be, after presenting the draft to Committee of Bar Examiners in December and getting their feedback, then coming back at their January meeting with a final cost-benefit analysis and their recommendation, which we would then present the following month to the Board in February for the Board's first real discussion of the cost-benefit analysis and the recommendations. Based on input from the Board, if necessary, we'll bring the item back for revisions to the Committee of Bar Examiners at either their March or April meeting, and then back to the Board in May. So this will be your second opportunity to look at the final cost-benefit analysis and develop your recommendations to the Supreme Court. So as I said, an aggressive schedule, but necessarily aggressive in order for us to meet the time requirements, to give notice of what the next bar exam is going to be, as we discussed on August 14, there is a built-in timeline for that because the MBE, which we are currently delivering, is no longer available after February 2028. It will not exist as a standalone product. So at the latest, that is, that would be the last time that we could administer that exam, and we would have to have something by July 2026, July 2028. So that's why the schedule looks as it does. If you can go to the next slide, and we'll turn back to Audrey.
Thank you. Next slide, Sharon. Okay, so the provisional licensure program, the latest iteration, for those who withdrew or were unsuccessful on the February 2025 bar exam, that application opened September 1st. And as of two days ago, we had 33 fully submitted applications. That means everything was complete and they had the payment along with their application. 26 of those have been approved. We have 51 applications that are in some sort of status but not submitted that have launched in the portal. And so we'll see if those come through to us in the next few weeks. And the application itself doesn't close until the end of the year, December 31st. So again, we're not sure yet. It's still early on how the uptake will be for this program. We've done a lot of outreach so far, webinars and presentations for law schools and other entities. Yesterday, Office of Access and Inclusion and I did one for Legal Services Funders Network and the Legal Aid Association of California. We've done email notifications out to CLA, government agencies, legal service organizations. We've done social media campaigns and then partnering with COAF, Working Group, to create resources for PLLs, those provisionally licensed lawyers and their supervisors. Next slide. We've also developed a dedicated email for provisionally licensed lawyers to address concerns and challenges and give feedbacks. Feedback also, the supervisors can use that as well, and then they can discuss concerns with their supervisor. We can connect them with resources, direct them to the complaint process and assist them as needed, and they'll help us also gather data to understand if there are systemic issues with the supervisor-supervisee relationship. Next slide. The October 2025 first-year exam is coming up. Next slide. So that just closed on Monday, September 15. We've been doing this exam with Prometric, primarily the applicants' tests and test centers. In the application, they can explain an extenuating circumstance where they need to test remotely, and that remote exam is live remote, so they are being observed by a live proctor. As of when the application closed, there were 258 applications. Those have not all been approved. They're going through the eligibility process of approval now. Next slide. The legal specialist exam is administered every two years, so this is a year for that exam. Next slide. It's actually 13 exams, different specialty areas. The final filing deadline for that is October 1st, so it hasn't closed yet. There's almost 400 applications as of the other day. There's been a lot of outreach to all California licensees, local bar associations, affinity groups, to see if we can get more applications for the specialty exams. This exam will be the first time the legal specialization exams are using Prometric as well, that live remote proctoring that I just explained. The exam has been remote proctored before, but through record and review, actually with Examsoft, but that has its challenges. It's less secure to record and then review those videos days or weeks later, and then it's labor-intensive to review all the videos as well. Since this is the first time that that exam will be on a different platform with live remote proctoring, there's a robust communication plan to ensure that all test takers understand the process, that they need to take a practice exam, and what the minimum system requirements are for their devices. I think that might be it.
We're happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions?
So if there are no questions, I did just want to mention, I've told a number of the trustees here today, that, great for her, sad for me, Audrey Ching has given her notice. She took a, she had a fabulous opportunity that landed in her lap that she could not say no to. And so she's with us for one more week, and I am trying to get every bit of information out of her brain that I can. And she has in fact drafted the job description to fill behind her. So I am very sad to see Audrey go. Audrey came to the bar in February of 2019. She started as the Assistant Director of Admissions, took over as the Director of Admissions in April of 2023, I believe. And I just, I will be incredibly sad to see her go. And so I just wanted to make sure that you all had the opportunity to know that this is the last week that Audrey will be with the state bar.
All right. Well, definitely bittersweet news. Ms. Ching, thank you for your dedication over the years, and best of luck in your next steps.
Yeah, yes, thank you. I didn't know Donna was going to mention that, so now I'm also embarrassed, but thank you.
All right. Anything else on this item? Okay. Music to my ears. All right. Once again, best of luck.
I think I'm going to keep talking, though, for the next couple.
Oh, well, okay, never mind.
Sorry.
Take it back. Okay, all right, 6.2. You're right, I should have read ahead. This is updating action on fee waivers for the February 2026 bar exam, and this is being presented by our almost dearly departed Audrey Ching.
Yes, okay, so this will be a pretty quick item, I think. I don't have any slides, but you'll remember that the Board approved fee waivers for unsuccessful or withdrawn February 2025 applicants, and then those also got extended to be used through the July 2026 exam. We made that waiver very flexible for the July 2025 exam. We allowed applicants to withdraw all the way up to the day before the exam. That was because of the HUMRO review of scoring was pending, also pending the Supreme Court action about the provisional licensure program. So because there were so many things up in the air, we gave the utmost flexibility for the July 2025 exam. Those conditions no longer exist for the February 2026 exam, and when you have so many applicants withdrawing right before the exam, it's administratively burdensome. It's also expensive. It's hard to plan how many test takers will be at a site, hard to assign proctors, and we might book the kind of proctors that are most expensive, the temps that come from Robert Half, and then we didn't really need them because we had so many withdrawals and no-shows right before the exam. So that is a cost burden as well. So at their meeting on September 9, the Committee of Bar Examiners recommended that for February 2026, all those waiver-eligible applicants have to adhere to the posted withdrawal deadlines, the final withdrawal deadline being two weeks before the exam. And if you do not withdraw by the deadline and you have that waiver, you will lose the waiver for the July 2026 exam, which is the last exam that it's applicable. So I think we have a resolution for you to review to approve that recommendation from
Trustee should have had an opportunity to review this resolution. After reviewing it, are there any questions or comments? Trustee Tony?
Of the $4.9 million that was authorized for the fee waivers, do we have an idea of how much of that has either been redeemed or we know will be redeemed? You know? I think the 4.9 was a maximum, and so I'm thinking that the actual number is probably not exactly, or maybe it is, I don't know, just ask it.
So then I, the number of total eligible waiver applicants, I'm not sure. In just doing some math in my head, I don't think it equals that number, but I don't have those numbers in front of me. I know Atta Selly mentioned it earlier as one of the reasons for the issues with the admissions fund during the Finance Committee, but I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, Mark.
That's okay. I might ask the same question to Atta Selly later. We'll see. Thank you.
All right. I'm intrigued. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? And if not, may I have a motion and a second?
I'll move the item.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, first by Trustee Sewell, second by Trustee Gore. May I have a roll call vote, please?
This is on 6.2?
Correct.
Correct. Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison, not present?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present?
Stallings?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Perfect. Okay. Item 6.3, Approval of Specified Admissions Related Contracts Pursuant to BNP Code Section 6008.6. And welcome back, Ms. Hirschwitz and Ms. Ching.
I don't have any slides, but I will kind of talk through the table that's in the item. So primarily, the items for you to approve for admissions are bar exam-related. The first one on that table is for Examsoft. Again, the Committee of Bar Examiners selected Examsoft as the vendor on September 9. They do the platform for essays and the performance test, and then we get the exports, and then we can send them to the graders. We've been using that software since 2002, except for the February 2025 exam. And when we contract with them for multiple exams, we do get the rate of $75 per applicant. And then on October 10, at the October 10 CBE meeting, because the September 9 meeting was only agendized for February 2026 bar exam, the Committee of Bar Examiners will then formally approve, although they have informally already known about the discount of $75 per applicant versus 100, since we have multiple exams contracted. And then test center items, items 2 through 6 on that chart are the sites that I explained earlier, and the admissions updates, so standard sites in Ontario and Chula Vista, accommodated sites in Anaheim, Sacramento, and Los Angeles. I mentioned Golden Gate University and the LA office, but those are both under $50,000, so they don't need to come to you for approval. Costs include the meeting room space, we have multiple meeting room spaces for different sites, but the bulk of it is for examines, the AV, the tables, the chairs. And then the gap I explained, that we don't have a standard site yet in the Bay Area or Sacramento, so we still have a gap of about 2,000 seats that we need. And then other contracts, admissions-related items like 7 through 13, I believe, on that sheet, we have ACS Ventures with the psychometrician, ad hoc services for psychometric services. One of our TA consultants is on there for you to approve. And then the exam development and grading team, contract increases, ongoing bar exam question development, and then the Edge Team leads their grading teams for. question development, and then the edge team leads their grading teams for essays and performance tests. Those are the admissions contract items for you today.
And I would just add on item number one, the Examsoft contract. This year, to make its recommendation for what what vendor to use, on September, on August 20th and September 9th, between those those two dates, the Committee of Bar Examiners had demonstrations from three different vendors and looked at the different platforms and made its recommendation based on what they saw and what they read from the submission from the vendors, and elected to go with Examsoft for for the February 2026 exam and express their inclination to to go with Examsoft for July 26 as well, in light of the the understand, the agreement from Examsoft or the offer by Examsoft, that there would be that discounted price if we were if we contracted with them for two exams. You heard a public commenter talk about the the process with the that the Committee of Bar Examiners went through. And the Committee of Bar Examiners, in sort of making their determination, did a sort of a holistic assessment of the vendors. And what they expressed was, they didn't see from the other vendors anything that would suggest that that at this time, they should they should do, they should depart from Examsoft, and that's why they were inclined to to continue to contract with Examsoft. That made the most sense to them, to continue on with that contracting. And with the discounted price, it was also nearly the same rate as the lowest as the lowest vendor.
Donna, I was going to mention, I went over those test centers. So the test center amounts, they do include, so I kind of talked about what they go, that they include the meeting space, AV, tables, chairs, a lot of things that happen at those sites. And we build in a contingency buffer of 30% for a lot of reasons, because we've had to go back and forth asking for additional increases to contracts that has to now come to the board. And we've just had a history of needing to increase the original amount. So if you're looking at the amounts in the table that we provided for you, that does have a buffer built in for those test centers, so they very possibly will come under that amount, but we have built that buffer in based on experience.
So trustees, there's an opportunity here. So if you would like to retain those buffers, which is, as Audrey just described, the 30%, that is one option of going about this. As another option would be to put the exact amounts that are currently being contracted for and possibly explore developing a different resolution that would authorize an additional amount or additional percentage, perhaps authorizing the executive director in consultation with Board Chair or Finance Committee Chair to to make those decisions and then be brought back to the next meeting.
I'm sorry, is your question in, I don't see that in the resolution, am I looking?
No, we wouldn't revise the resolution. It's currently, those those amounts that you're seeing in that table currently include for for those particular test site items and for Examsoft as well, is that correct, Audrey?
No, not for, well, I guess Examsoft is built on their minimums, so we don't know yet how many applicants are going to take the exam, so.
Okay, so for the test site items, those have a 30% buffer built into those amounts. So an option for the board would be to reduce the amounts and authorize and have a resolution that authorizes a percentage increase, or because there's a built-in amount with that 30% that we've talked about, to approve it as recommended in the item.
So in the table, it's 2 through 6, those test centers.
And so just for context, we do often find ourselves, especially with the hotel sites for accommodated applicants, where where folks are testing in, often testing in hotel rooms, where we have underestimated the number of rooms that we would need, and it turns out that we need another room block, and that in the past has added 30% or more onto the contracted amount. And so in order to be able to proceed with these contracts and to nail them down and be able to make sure that 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 applicants know what sites they have to register for, that's why we put in the the buffer based on that past experience, so that we can go forward with the contract and get get everything finalized.
All right, any questions about? Oh, yeah, sorry, trustee Gore.
This is obviously my first time going through this. So do you normally put in that 30% buffer for, if you've known this pattern? So last year, the year before, the year before, had the 30% buffer in designated sites, one. And two, does that give enough cushion for whatever site you might land in San Francisco Bay Area?
So we would have to come back to you for for when we get another site, so.
If it's above the threshold.
Whether.
Or regardless.
Regardless, whether it's San Mateo Convention Center, San Jose Event Center, I think I got those backward, or or anything else in the list that Audrey was noting that isn't already on this list, we would we would come back to you with that. And so this is just building in the buffer for the these particular vendors. And.
And that's a traditional way of presenting it to the trustees?
I, so I don't think we have in the past included included the buffer of 30%.
Trustee Tony?
So so on this issue, I'll stick with this for a minute. I wonder whether it, how it would feel to say, we approve a base rate, which is the, you know, what what you, I assume that, you know, the the rates that you are coming to us are based on something, right? Not better than a guess, okay?
Yes, it's the quote that we have from the venues, plus 30%.
So one way to do it is to approve the base rate and approve a not to exceed rate. So in other words, it's a range, and, you know, you know, kind of list the kinds of things that can that that can go towards. That's one way to think about it, so that the so that there's clarity what we're voting for. I'd like us to think about something like that.
Is that something that can be reflected in today's meeting? Okay, we can get that language?
Yes, so what we could do is, if you wanted to move to the next item, we could have that ready to go, to bring back after the, I believe, the budget item is the next agenda item, and we can have that ready to go immediately after, along with the other contracts-related item outside of admissions.
And so and then before we do that, though, are there any other alternatives the board members want to pursue, or is the general consensus among pursuing that that course of action? Trustee Good?
Just just one question. So if we didn't approve it, what the downside is, you have to come back to us a million times?
Yes. That's right.
Yes. And so if they, if if we get told, oh, it's going to be another $5,000 for for more electrical outlets, we would need to come back to you.
Okay.
Oh, we need, we need 12 more sleeping rooms, we'd have to come back to you.
And and in the past, we've done it, handled it that way?
I don't know, Eric, if you want to.
No, so in the past, as you saw at the August meeting, that was something where I we needed those outlets for a meeting where we couldn't notice it in time, so I authorized it, and then it came back to the board to be approved.
Oh, okay, I don't think I was at that.
Okay, so that's that's one way it's been handled. And then other times where we haven't brought that item back until it hit a particular threshold, we are revising that practice. So it would be absent this buffer or a resolution that provides an authorization for an expanded either amount or percentage. It would be, you know, convening the Contracts Committee or convening the the full Board of Trustees anytime. I will just say that as we are working to get testing space in particular, or if we're trying to get, you know, licenses for particular software where staff needs it, the convening of the committee every every time we need to do something like that in those particular spaces would happen frequently. In other spaces, you know, convening the Contracts Committee or convening the Board to, you know, do contracts that are amendments to contracts, you know, for consultants and those types of things, that makes a lot of sense, and we can have that timeline set up, so we would bring those to the board.
Okay, is another option delegating this to the Chair and Vice Chair to approve on a, you know, interim basis, hopefully in a speedier way than convening a committee would be?
Yeah.
Well, that's certainly a possibility. If it's delegated to two members of the Board, then that would require Bagley Keane compliance or meeting, so they could meet together. Or it could be delegated to one individual, in which case it wouldn't require, wouldn't be, wouldn't require to comply with the Bagley Keane requirements, because it's not a a situation that would trigger the open meeting requirements compliance.
So we could say the Chair or the Vice Chair?
Yes.
If somebody wasn't available, there would be another person.
In the event of unavailability, it would be the Vice Chair, yes, we could do that.
All right.
I'll just say, from my experience, past couple of years as Chair, I think giving flexibility like that to staff and then having that check with, you know, having the Chair review that, you know, that addition, and also with the Chair keeping in mind all the comments of the Board, and just using that as rubric and and looking at that additional expense. And I think it's it's a, it's not a perfect solution, but it's one that can be responsive to, you know, dynamic situations, and especially when we're trying to nail down these very important venues or, you know, very important contracts, I think staff does need that that flexibility. But that, so I would be in favor of delegating to either Chair or Vice Chair.
Trustee Tony?
If we said something like up to 30% for 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 items not contained in the original base contract, you know, to give some flexibility, but also just an outside limit, I'd be okay with that, having the Chair do that, just as long as they, we gave them a guideline. How's that sound?
I mean, is that going to be workable from staff's standpoint?
Yeah, I mean, it would be effectively the same as if you all approved the with the 30% buffer today. If it went over that, we would have to come back to you anyway, so so Mr. Tony's language would would have the same effect. So, yeah, we could sort of build in that it's, so we would, you would approve the base amount and delegate to the Chair, or if the Chair is unavailable, to the Vice Chair, to approve amendments to those contracts, up to 30% of the contract amount for, I'd want to finesse the items not contained in the original base contract, just because it's it's often the same items, it's just more of them?
Yeah, but you can figure out the wording, but it but it means they can't all of a sudden say, oh, yeah, the price went up because they knew that there was more wiggle room.
Yep.
So, yeah.
I'm fine with having trustee Tony or trustee Cisneros just sign off without creating, you know, a bandwidth for it, for this. So I'm good with that, and just delegating it to the Chair and Vice Chair.
Do we need some time to prep that sort of language? Oh, trustee Sewell?
I was just going to say, I'm I'm good with it as well. I just, I think on the on the back end, I'm just not sure how we as a board or maybe get a readout of of what's happened. And so would just like to make to ensure the fact that there's some sort of readout that that it's that's occurred.
Yeah, I think staff has heard that, you know, this is stuff that we want to track, and then if, you know, we track these expenditures and we're seeing trends, and maybe we reexamine the policy and, you know, the way we approach contracts.
And we can just do a sort of an informational consent, you know, item, that's just a report back at the next at the next board meeting, just so you can see any any of the amounts that that we've had to utilize this authority.
All right, any other questions or comments about this subject area?
I would, and if nobody else wants to do this, it's okay. It'd be my preference to separate the Examsoft contract from the rest, because I'm fine with the rest of it. I have had issues with Examsoft for the past five years. I think that they have a pattern of problems in their software during the exams, and I'm kind of disappointed that that has not been, that that hasn't been part of the conversation. And, you know, you know, I want to I want to cast my protest vote.
And Donna, I don't know if you have those numbers in front of you. I know that we received a report, I think it was last board meeting, about any systemic issues that we saw with the use of Examsoft or any issues that popped up. From what I recall, it did not appear that there were any issues that were, you know, statistically significant compared to the administration of prior bar exams. Is that is that correct?
I think so, but I'm not going to commit to that without looking at the numbers. But that is that is certainly my recollection.
So do we need the, do we need to take the next item then and come back with appropriate language?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to table this item. We're going to go to item 6.4, which is approval of 2025 Quarter Two Financial Statements Report and a Proposed Mid-Year Budget Amendment Projections and Variance Report. And this item is being presented by Chief Financial Officer RSLE Montoya Chico. All right, welcome.
Thank you. Perfect. So, good afternoon, Board Board Members. I already made this presentation to the Finance Committee earlier today, so some of you have seen it. So today I'll be presenting the results. So this agenda item has multiple components. I will first go through the results of our Quarter Two Financial Statements, and then we're going to cover the proposed mid-year budget amendments, as well as the projections that we are we are updating through the end of 2025, and included in here as well as the variance report. So first, I will start with our Q2 financial statement results on the revenue side. So if you see, our total revenue bar-wide is over budget by just under 28 million, and the component of that surplus really is all of these funds you see here. So I will first start with the general fund, which makes up most of it. Sorry, the second largest component. So the general fund is over budget on the revenue side by just under 6.5 billion, and that's really two main reasons. We've actually exceeded our mandatory fee, mandatory fees budget, as well as our late fees and penalties have exceeded our expectations. On the mandatory fees, it is something that we hadn't seen in the past, certainly not last year. Last year, we actually fell short over mandatory fees. Our late fees or noncompliance fees did help us bridge the gap last year in the revenue. So this is something that we didn't, we haven't seen. It's great for for now. If the revenue, if the revenue trend continues specifically for mandatory fees, we are projecting to be over budget on the mandatory fees by 1.4 million. Late fees is a continuing trend this year, though we're seeing, you know, high rates of noncompliance, so there's penalties and late fees for those. On the Equal Access Fund, it's slightly below budget. All of the grants funds are pass-through funds, so whatever revenue comes in, most of it gets dispersed out. So the reason why EAF or the Equal Access Fund is slightly below budget is there were some delays in some of the grants, or some of the grants were actually declined by the grantees. The Legal Services Trust Fund, as you see here, is well-well by almost 22 million above budget, and this is another trend that continues to occur. The budget for this is really set by the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission, so they set up the expectations every year for how much the average balances are in the interest rates. And so far, the actuals, the average daily balances, as well as the interest rates, have exceeded the budget, which is what's causing a lot of this significant revenue over budget. And that's primarily the IOTA accounts. The Admissions Fund, as you see, is below budget on the revenue side by almost 4.5 million, and that's really just a result of all of the fee waivers that we issued for the bar exam. bar exam and the extension of the withdrawal period. So we did incur a loss in the admissions fund of $4.4 million on the revenue side. Um, the client security fund is more or less slightly above budget too. It's also funded by mandatory fees. So just like in the general fund, we saw more mandatory fees. The client security fund also has that overage primarily because we had more mandatory fees. Um, and then finally, the other, other funds have, uh, it's a component of multiple funds, but the primary reason why it's over budget by almost 4 million, it's really the inaugural justice gap fund. There's donations there, um, from class action settlement that were donated to the fund. Moving on to the expenses, um, as you see here, bar wide or total expenses are slightly below budget, um, by almost $2 million. And again, the components are all of the same funds you see here. Um, so on the, starting with the general fund again, the general fund is below budget by 1.3 million. And that's several components, um, that several reasons why. Uh, we have underspending in building operations, um, as well as less expenditures in travel and training in the first half of the year. It, it, it will probably pick up in the second half of the year, but that is, um, one of the reasons. And we've also had, uh, delays or pauses in projects that have caused professional services and equipment to have lower spending than we had budgeted. Um, the grants fund, moving on to the grants fund again, as you, as you may have seen in the other slides, we have, uh, less expenditures on the grants fund. But again, this is all pass-through and that's really just, um, a result of, of a care court, which is one of the grants in the grants fund, um, that had unsigned contracts with several counties. So we do anticipate in the next couple of quarters, um, to, to have that, those disbursements paid out then. Um, the legal, uh, the legal services trust fund, it's, it's above budget on the expenses. Again, it's all pass-through and that's really just because we had some early quarter three and quarter four disbursements to certain grantees. Um, the admissions funds, as you see here, is below budget on the expenses by just over half a million dollars. Um, and this is only as of Q2. So all of the July expenses for the bar exam haven't come in yet as of Q2. So, uh, as you'll see later on, uh, I, we do have a proposed budget amendment to increase expenses significantly in the admissions fund to true up all of the expenditures that we, we, by now we're already incurred. Um, and then finally, CSF, um, again, it's, the expenses are slightly above budget. Um, we are doing the first trust settlement program right now and our expectations, um, have actually come below, um, the budget. We haven't realized as much collections as we hope. So that's why there's a little bit of overage on the client security fund. Now I'm going to move into the, the mid-year projections. So this is the mid-year, well, the mid-year projection that we make through, through the end of 2025 for all of the funds. Um, we take the data that we've received through Q2, any budget amendments that we're anticipating making to adjust revenues and expenses, and we are projecting new amounts and new reserves, uh, through the end of 2025. So I'll get into a little bit more detail in the subsequent slides. But as you can see here, um, the general fund is, is for the first time in at least two, maybe even three years, um, above the minimum percent target. The board does have a target reserve policy of 17 to 30%. Um, and this is the first time I've seen, like I said, in a couple of years where the general fund is finally hitting it. So that's a positive, a positive sign. Um, the admissions, on the other hand, it's, it's unfortunately one of the two funds that is below the target of 17%. And I'll get into, uh, obviously the reasons why, but you know, it, it all stems from the February bar exam issues. Um, all of the funds that you see here labeled as NA on the reserve level, these are all grant-related funds. And then there's the client security fund. These are exempt from the minimum target policy. Um, and that's why you see those listed as NA. So just really quick talking about the two funds, there's only two funds right now that are below the target of 17%. One being the lawyer's assistance program. This is only at 3.8%. Um, we actually had budgeted a bigger deficit. So we, there were some savings, uh, we're projecting some savings. It will still operate at a deficit at the end of the year, but it, it got smaller. Um, we will need to do some personnel changes on this particular fund, uh, to be able to sustain it in the long, in the long term. Um, the admissions fund, as I was mentioning, it's below, below the 17% target. It's only at 10.8%, so just under 11, with the ending reserve of about $3.4 million going into 2026. Um, again, this is really a result of decreasing revenues from the February bar exam and having to increase expenses as well, primarily from the MBE and all of the expenses that I'll get into in a little bit more detail in subsequent slides from the July bar exam. Um, just to highlight some of the funds from the mid-year financial projection, I won't go through all of them, but I do want to, of course, highlight the, the general fund. Um, we had originally adopted a budget of, um, for the general fund to be in deficit spending of almost $5 million. And it's actually flipped. Now we're projecting the general fund to end with a surplus of about $2 million, um, which is that 20% reserve. Um, and this is really mainly from the increase in, uh, the higher CTEP and late compliance fees we received, um, exceeding mandatory fees and also our investment income. So those three components have really helped the general fund exceed the revenues and basically turn, uh, turn into a, a surplus instead of a deficit. Um, I won't go into this client security fund or equal access fund too much, other than what's here. They're, they're pretty much on target, but there were, uh, some savings there. I do want to highlight really quick the legal services trust fund. I know in the, in the prior slides, it shows a negative deficit of almost just over 76 million. Um, and this is really because this particular fund, which is where the IOTA accounted, um, the actuals have exceeded the expectations year over year. So they've accumulated a lot of funds. Their reserves, if you, if you look at my prior slides, it's about 242 million. So this fund has been accumulating a lot of funds that now the legal services trust fund commission is actively, um, going to be dispersing a lot more this year, next year, and, and a little bit into 2027. Um, of all of this reserves that have been, um, accumulating. So it's, it's not that it's tapping into any of our operating, operating funds. It's really just an accumulation of all of these funds that are now being dispersed at a higher rate than the revenues coming out. I'm not going to get into the details, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Attachment D is that mid-year budget to actual variance. Um, so we do explain all of the variances for any revenue or expenses that hit or plus or minus the 200,000. And this is, uh, in the board book. Um, and this is again, as of the six months. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, from the attachment, if anybody has any. Um, I am going to move on to the proposed budget amendments, uh, which is attachment E. Uh, this is prepared again on actual financial data. We, we take any, any known inaccuracies in the budget, in the budget that we may need to correct, as well as in anticipated changes, um, that we've seen and proposed budget amendments to true up our actuals to, or I should say the budget to actuals from what we see. Um, most of the, there's budget transfers and budget amendments. The transfers, uh, so far are all just in the general fund. So any savings we have in certain cost centers, we transfer them to other cost centers that may be over, but it all stays within the general fund. So there is no net impact into any other funds. Um, the amendments themselves, uh, those are either increasing or reducing revenues and expenses, plus or minus. Um, and those are again, mostly for the admissions fund. There are a few grant-related fund amendments that we're proposing. Um, and that's mostly funds that we, there's a new grant that we hadn't received when the budget was adopted. So we're making a, proposing a budget amendment for that. Um, and certain other fundings that we get in, in, um, grants that we just want to true up to keep the year going with more actuals, uh, the budget being closer to actuals. Um, the only one, the only budget amendment that we are making in the general fund, um, is for litigation and investigation costs that are ongoing. So we are, we are proposing that budget amendment in the general fund. I want to get into some details of the amendments for the admissions fund. Um, and this will be items to B and to D in attachment, um, E. We are reducing or proposing to reduce revenue in, uh, the admissions fund by three and a half million dollars. Um, and that's made up of primarily, this, really these three components that I have here on the slides. Um, overall, there's actually a reduction of revenue of 4.6 million dollars, um, due to the February and July bar exams and fee waivers. Um, that is offset by the new, uh, 25 PL program that was recently approved by the joint CBE and board meeting. We're hoping to get around 600,000, um, revenue from that. So that's helping offset some of the revenue, um, reductions from the bar exam. Um, and there's also a small increase of about half a million dollars from other admissions programs, um, since we're getting a larger number of applicants than we had anticipated. So there's some, um, additional revenue that we're earning there. But net, it's a three and a half million reduction in, in the admissions, uh, revenue. Um, on the expense side, we are reducing, we're proposing to reduce expenses, sorry, increase expenses by 2.6 million dollars. Um, of that, uh, 1.9 million is for the July bar exam costs. I didn't list everything there, but these are some of the additional expenses we had to incur, um, going in person. So we had additional proctor, proctor expenses, uh, you know, chairs and table rentals, AV rentals, security guards for the sites, electrical, obviously paying the MBE, um, certain validation consultants. Um, and this is just, just to name, name a few, but, but in item 2F is where you, we list every single amendment that has to do with, uh, specifically the July bar exam. Um, we also have an additional increase in expenses of 1.2 million and these are more, uh, not necessarily exam bar related. Uh, we do have some overages in personnel costs. Um, the admissions fund, our offices and meeting the 8% vacancy rate. Um, and we had additional recruiting expenses that we have, uh, we have to incur. Um, so that's adding an additional 1.2 million. Um, and then finally, on the opposite side, we are reducing in another area of the admissions fund, um, expenses by half a million. And this is just because we had less testing, less expenses on testing accommodation consultants and fewer law school inspections. So that helped, uh, save a little bit of money in the expense side. But overall, um, we do need about 2.6 million dollars of increases in expenses on the admissions, on the admission side. Um, and that's all I have on this item. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? See, trustee Sewell?
No questions, but I, I think I'm just going to say that, uh, I want to thank RSLE and her team for, uh, the work that went into, uh, this report. Um, uh, the finance committee, uh, took a pretty in-depth look at it earlier, uh, today, had, had a lot of questions and a, a, a good discussion with RSLE about our current state of, uh, current state of affairs. And RSLE, please don't let me mischaracterize things. But I think what I can, uh, report out in what you just heard is that, uh, we're doing better than expected across a number of our funds, including the general fund. Um, the admissions fund, I think we all know, as a result of what happened, uh, with the February exam, um, uh, it's kind of yet to be determined what the actual hit is. And I just want to let, uh, board members know that, uh, the finance committee will have an ad hoc meeting sometime next month, uh, to get updated on what the current state of affairs are with the, uh, with the admissions fund. And we'll, uh, be able to report that back out, uh, in relatively short order. Is that correct, RSLE?
Yes. And I think one thing that I wanted to mention that I mentioned at the finance committee meeting, the general fund is, is doing better than expected and that's, and that's greater. Reserves are getting, uh, building up a little. However, in 2028, we do lose that $52 that, that the legislature gave us to fund, uh, staff, staff costs. So in 2028, we, we hit a fiscal cliff and it, we go back down to a deficit spending again. So it's, it's, it's good now, but I also want to be cautiously optimistic since we are going to lose that $52 in 2028.
Okay. Any other questions? Did you? All right. If we could have the, uh, resolution put up on the screen, please?
I'd like to move adoption of this motion.
All right.
Second.
Okay. First by trustee Sewell, second by trustee Gore. Oh, that was Tony. I'm sorry. I, I apologize. Um, so first by trustee Sewell, second by trustee Tony. Did I get that right?
First by.
Oh, Tony. Oh, my gosh. All right. I should have, uh, had three of these, I guess. Okay. Uh, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison not present. Huser?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present. Stallings?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Great. RSLE, thank you so much for all the incredible work. And then trustee Sewell to you and, uh, the finance committee firsthand on top of all this. We appreciate it immensely. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to item 6.3 or can we go? Do we have that ready?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to have to make a few modifications on the fly.
Okay. All right. Modifications on the fly at 4:47 PM. Music to my ears. Really hoping to end my tenure here by discussing contracts, which was my least favorite class in law school. Careful what you wish for, I guess. All right. So we have the resolution up on the screen. And then the language that we've been discussing, I would imagine that's down in the further results, kind of the last portion.
I think we saw type of, uh, here.
Sharon should be delegates, not delegated. Sorry.
You, you wanted to leave the number five.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Trustee Good. And then in the further result, there's an edit. Yeah. So, uh, just doesn't trust trustee Tony.
So trustee Tony, did you want to pull out completely the Examsoft component?
I'd, I'd like to, yes.
Okay.
So, trustee, just to clarify, so that'd be a separate?
Separate motion.
Yeah. So it would be approves contracting with, uh, the vendors. Is it, it'd be two through, I don't have the number it goes through. I think that, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, so with the vendors two through 13 listed in the table. And then you would remove, I think you would remove that last sentence, right? Because that will go on the new.
On the new one.
Correct. So to the extent that, that'll come off.
Can we just scroll and see what the 14 and 15 were? I just don't remember. Do we want to approve those two?
Oh, that's not the right.
No?
Sorry. That's for the next item.
Oh, okay.
So, sorry, Sharon. Do you have a different table, Sharon?
So the table should include?
This is not the correct table. This is the table for a different item.
Oh, okay. Well, we can get the right one on.
Yeah. It should be from Audrey. Do you have that one?
Yeah, and it's showing us.
Um, hold on one second. I'll send it to you.
Do we want to have this not to exceed 30% or just, I mean, I'm comfortable not saying. Okay. I guess, I guess I want it not to exceed 30%.
I would suggest having a cap. It might be easier.
Okay, that's fine.
And, yeah. You could increase the cap if you'd like, but, yeah, having a cap would be helpful.
I'm having Donna send it to you. Donna, can you send that to Sharon? Um, ideally in a word document.
Can we just say like attached in the agenda item instead of attached in the table below?
That's fine. We just want to show you the correct numbers.
Right.
You know, because now there's a reduction of 30%. You know, because now there's a reduction of 30%.
Do you have it?
Yes.
I have, it's going to be a separate motion, though. And I just sent it to Sharon.
Okay, I think, okay, I think this reflects the accurate numbers. After trustees have had a chance to review it, can I have a first and a second?
Isn't it supposed to go to 13? No, I'm confused.
So this is just the change, there were only certain items that were, that had that buffer built in, not every item. It's just those items.
I'll move this item.
All right. I'll second. Great. First by trustee Tony, second by vice chair Sisneros. May I have a roll call vote?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison not present. Huser?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens? Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present and Stallings?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
All right. We need to take the exam soft item now, or do we, or should we go on?
There's a motion, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, can you move the table down? That table is not related to, or you guys should delete that table. It's confusing. Thank you.
All right. So resolve the board trustees approves contracting with the vendor one listed in the table of the staff report. And vendor one is exam soft?
Correct.
All right.
We need to remove that five again.
Okay. All right. Can I have a first and a second? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second.
All right. First by myself, second by trustee Good. May I have a roll call vote?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Abstein.
Harrison not present. Huser?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Tony?
Nay.
Trejo not present. Stallings?
Aye.
With eight ayes and two nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right, next is 6.5, approval of specified contracts pursuant to BNP code 6008.6. And this item is being presented by Principal Procurement Analyst Griselle Zindejas and Finance Director Justin Urt. So welcome. If we could promote these two presenters. Welcome back, Justin.
Thank you.
And welcome, Ms. Zindejas.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I'm presenting the contracts that require approval by the board. So I'm here to address any questions. And with that, I will open up the discussion if there are any particular questions on the contracts that we have on the list. Thank you.
And I will point out that similar to the admissions fund, there are three contracts on this list that had a 10% buffer filled in. There are number 13, 14, and 15. They're all to do with the Los Angeles building, the LA security services, janitorial services, and engineering services. And this is in case there are emergencies in the building that are unanticipated, or we use the building for the bar exam or other unplanned meetings. That buffer kind of allows for those payments to go through.
Yes, trustee Good.
I have a question about one of the line items, which was to Legal Aid Association of California, an increase of $320,000. Obviously, they do important work in terms of coordinating among IOTA-funded grantee programs. But I just wondered why the increase was so much and if that was in line with prior years or not. There wasn't really that level of detail, so I wondered.
That is in line with what the annual spend is typically with the legal services organization. They operate a website and then they do a lot of outreach programs. But this is in line with what they would have been spending in 2024.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, trustee Tony?
I really appreciate these being on a regular agenda. There was a time in the past where items like this would be on consent, so I appreciate it very much. Thank you. I have no further questions and support all the items.
Is that a motion that I'm hearing, the percolating?
Happy to make the motion.
Perfect. Did you want to?
I just want to, we're going to put up a resolution that's very similar to the one we just did for the admissions contract item. So again, it's removing that buffer, but it would add the authorization. Just, it currently says 30% in the same way that the test sites did for admissions. As you just heard, the buffer there was a 10% buffer for those contracts, so we could reduce that if the board feels that's appropriate, to 10%, or otherwise, we could leave us as.
Trustee Good?
I mean, I think if it was thought that 10% was reasonable, then we should go with that.
So change 30 to 10? All right. Trustee Tony, is that a friendly amendment to your initial motion?
Absolutely.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by trustee Barahona. May I have a roll call vote?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison not present. Huser?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present. Stallings?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Thank you so much for the brief presentation. It's highly efficient. Okay, 6.6, this is approval of revisions to the rules and regulations pertaining to the employment of executive and management staff employees, rules and regulations pertaining to the employment of confidential staff employees, and rules and regulations pertaining to the benefits, terms, and conditions governing state bar court judge service. And this item is being presented by Director of Human Resources, Justice Israel. If we could promote Mr. Israel.
Good afternoon, trustees. So I will also make this fairly brief, and forgive me, forgive me, I'm a little under the weather today, so if my voice cuts out or anything, please be patient with me. The background here for this agenda item, which is to request approval of the revisions for the rules and regulations pertaining to the employment of executive and management staff employees, the rules and regulations pertaining to the employment of confidential staff employees, and the rules and regs pertaining to the benefits, terms, and conditions governing state bar court judge service. The background here is that the vast majority of the state bar is represented by a union. And back in July, the board reviewed and approved the modifications that the state bar reached with the union for bargaining unit staff, which increased some benefits and decreased others. So the purpose of this agenda item, for the most part, is to formalize those benefits and expand them to these additional unrepresented classes that I mentioned earlier. Basically, what these rules and regulations do is outline the terms and conditions of the employees who fall within those unrepresented classes. So I've broken down the staff report by changes that are applicable to specific rules and regulations. Some are applicable to all of the rules and regulations, and some are, you know, provisions that are only found in certain, you know, rules and regulations. So, for example, the executive rules and the confidential rules are the only sections that have, are the only rules and regulations that have any section about the leaps of absence, whereas the judge's rules and regulations does not. Beyond that, there were also a few technical changes, including elimination of terms pertaining to things like the chief administrative officer, which is a position that no longer exists, updates to things like the makeup and composition of the leadership team and their current titles. And then beyond that, there were some updates to the business and professions code that are reflected here in the executive and management rules and regulations, clarifying basically the executive director is subject to the executive rules and that the board has discretion to set the, you know, certain terms and benefits for the executive director, general counsel, and chief trial counsel, who are the board's direct reports. There are also some clarifications about the performance evaluation process for those positions, which are a little bit different than those for other executive and management staff. And clarify a couple of the things about prohibition, about private practice for those same classes. There is also a little bit of technical cleanup in that rules and regulations as well. So these, most of these changes were contemplated in early July when the discussion and approval of the memorandum of understanding between the union and the state bar were discussed. And there is a, basically, resolution here to adopt these changes that are described in the staff report. Other than that, I'll open up the floor for any questions that anyone may have.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to hear that you're not feeling good. Do we have any questions?
I'll move the item.
All right, we have an amended resolution that we'll put up. And then we'll see.
Just to explain, there are certain portions of the rules and regulations pertaining to employment of executive and management staff that should take effect immediately. Rest should be, take effect as of January 1, 2026, to align with the effective date of the additional benefits and changes that were negotiated to be a part of the MOUs.
Trustee Sewell, is that still your motion?
I will still move the item.
Perfect. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by trustee Tony. May I have a roll call vote?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Harrison not present. Huser?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present. Stallings?
Aye.
With 11 ayes and 0 nays, the motion carries.
Perfect. All right, Justice, get feeling better. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you.
Okay, what time are we going back to, 9:30? All right, that concludes the Thursday agenda of the Board of Trustees. We'll see you back at 9:30 tomorrow morning. Meeting is adjourned.